Good evening, and thank you for viewing the December 21st meeting of the Arcata City Council. The city council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Our first item tonight is a land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like to join, please join me for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Schaefer?
Present.
Vice Mayor Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman?
Present.
All present.
If you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak is accepting public comment. If you are logged onto Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone to unmute. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then moving to online comments. We will not be going back and forth. So if you are waiting or wanting to comment on an item, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is requested for that item. Item number four on our agenda tonight, we have ceremonial matters. Our first item is going to be a certificate of appreciation for John Barstow for his 29 and a half years of service to the city of Arcata, and this proclamation will be read by Councilmember White.
Whereas John Barstow served the community of Arcata continuously for 29 and a half years, having been appointed to the Design Review Committee on April 1st, 1993, and whereas John was first appointed to the Design Review Committee member, then to the Historic and Design Review Commission, and finally the Planning Commission, and whereas John's insightful thoughts, keen eye for design, and deep understanding of how projects are actually built improved the projects he reviewed for both the applicant and the community, and whereas John had a deep working knowledge of the general plan and zoning ordinances, often catching nuances in the code that others had missed, and whereas John spoke softly, but his words were always important to hear, and whereas John demonstrated a commitment to public service, giving back to the community in ways we could only hope to emulate, and whereas his dedication and service to all of us is appreciated and will be missed. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Arcata hereby expresses its appreciation to John Barstow for serving the people of Arcata for 29 and a half years. We wish him all the best and commemorate his release from duty as of October 20th, 2022, dated December 21st, 2022, by Sarah Schaefer, Mayor.
Thank you. And John isn't here to accept that, but we will get it to him, and we thank him for his service to the community. And then our second ceremonial matter is also a certificate of appreciation for Mike Clinton for his 40 years of service to the city of Arcata, and this will be read by Councilmember Matthews.
This is a certificate of appreciation for Mike Clinton for his 40 years of service to the city of Arcata. Whereas the city of Arcata hired Mike Clinton as a seasonal maintenance worker in 1982. Mike was promoted to full-time water wastewater maintenance worker in 1989 and continued to advance his certification and role within the city as water wastewater mechanic, plant operator, crew leader, and eventually water wastewater superintendent in 2011. Mike was further promoted to environmental service deputy director for Streets and Utilities in 2017. And whereas Mike's extensive knowledge of the city's infrastructure, positive relationships with community partners and contractors, and thoughtful approach to problem solving has ensured stewardship and improvement of the city's essential infrastructure, and whereas Mike's people-oriented positive leadership made him well-suited to serve as a deputy director of the largest department in the city and provides stability and depth of knowledge during retirement and transitions within the department, and whereas Mike has always been willing to lend a hand, demonstrating a calm demeanor in times of stress, Mike's steady, no-nonsense approach could be counted on to solve problems with zero drama, and whereas Mike's focus on mentoring and support for the professional growth of city staff has ensured well-functioning team and high quality of work within the Streets and Utilities Division, and whereas during Mike's tenure, the city has advanced the Arcata Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase 1 Upgrade Project, the largest capital improvement project the city has undertaken. Mike has provided a keen eye for review of designs to ensure successful construction and integration with current treatment facility operations. And whereas through his dedicated work ethic, steady leadership, and evident respect and appreciation for his staff, Mike cultivated excellence within the Environmental Services Department. Just don't ask him to speak in public. And whereas Mike has long served the best interests of the city, its residents and visitors, infrastructure, Arcata Wastewater Treatment Facility, and Arcata Marsh and Wild Lake Sanctuary with dedication, resourcefulness, and positivity, the results of his service will ensure high quality of life in Arcata for many generations to come. Now, therefore, the city council of the city of Arcata hereby expresses appreciation to Mike Clinton for serving the people of Arcata for 40 years. We wish him all the best and commemorate his retirement on December 27th, 2022, dated December 21, 2022, by Sarah Schaefer, Mayor.
And Mike is not here to accept either, but we thank him for his service, and we'll get both of our wonderful, I guess, not employees, people that have served us their certificates. So are there any comments online about either of these ceremonial matters or anybody here in person?
No online comments.
But a round of applause, yes. Okay. So next on our agenda will be early oral communications. The city council values your comments, and this 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for future agendas or referred to staff. Speakers may be limited to two minutes. There will also be time to have public comment on each specific agenda item, and then again at the end of the meeting under item 12. So please make your way to the podium. Raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press *9 if you are calling in by phone to make a comment.
Good evening. On November 2nd, 2022, at the city council meeting, I announced that the draft environmental impact report for the development of the Craftsman Mall project had been released by Cal Poly Humboldt. I was trying to get your attention and for some form of action or response to the ER that, and basically get something out of them. I could see after reading the ER that Humboldt was, Cal Poly Humboldt was throwing Arcata Fire District, taxpayers, and the health and safety of students under the bus. This issue runs parallel to the gateway process with a joint session, and the majority of the Planning Commission and the city council members on August 23rd, 2022, voted for a seven-story building heights. At this meeting, my public comment was, "What are you doing?" A week later, North Coast Journal comes out with the front page story, "Chipping Away: Already Short Bodies and Funding: Arcata Complicates Cal Poly Humboldt and the City's Tall Plans." Arcata Fire Department has been trying to meet with the city for a long time. I think the last attempt was on the 13th, which was canceled. On December 17th, I was reading the New York Times on the front page in a story about a seven-story residential building that caught on fire in France, killing at least 10 injured, killing five children, and over 160 firefighters and over 60 fire engines attended the blaze. Firefighters arrived at the scene within 12 minutes of the first emergency call. Witnesses told local news outlets that several occupants had jumped out of the windows to escape. Several people who were injured are still between life and death. According to the Arcata Fire Department, there has been a number of dorm fires in the past that called Cal Poly Humboldt. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Fred Wise. First, I want to congratulate and extend my appreciation to Arcata's new mayor, Vice Mayor, and our newest member of the city council, former Planning Commissioner Kimberly White. Thank you. I also want to speak about the Arcata Fire District. They gave, Eric Lowensberger spoke before the Planning Commission on August 4th. He said, "It seems incomprehensible to me that a recommendation on building height could come out of the Planning Commission or the city council until we have a full economic analysis of what it's going to cost the city of Arcata citizens and the Fire District to actually provide protection." He gave a presentation to the Arcata Fire District Board of Directors. It's, I have the video of it on arcata1.com. You can go to arcata1.com/council, and it goes right to it. Essentially, he said, and I shouldn't be paraphrasing, he's going to be giving a presentation. It's scheduled for January 10th. That video will be on the website also, my website. But I am going to paraphrase. "It is impossible for the Arcata Fire District to provide adequate fire protection for a building taller than four stories. It's not going to happen with taxes, property tax increase. It could possibly happen with funds from the university." Is that really accurate? Okay, I'm sorry. So we'll see on January 10th. I will say that from, the Fire District has been trying to reach people since February. The delay on last week, from Eric's point of view, was the third time that he was going to present this to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. And we will have another three-minute slot at the end, so there'll be more time.
Good evening, Arcata City Council members. Hopefully, the Climate Action Council for 2023 is my preview desire to ask of you to really make that first and foremost. I just came from the D Street Neighborhood Center where the Arcata Playhouse is hosting some people, some of them unhoused, for a nice meal at this time of year, and there's going to be some art projects and some proposals for future activities through Playhouse Arts. So this is redirected, redistributed funds. I just wanted you to know that it was a very full room and active, and I even met a person there who lives in The Grove, which I wanted to say was, I went out and visited it a couple weeks ago because I have a friend who lives there, and it was quite impressive. So that's a great step. I still am very, very concerned, and I want to remind the council and staff and folks about the transparency component that I hope that our city continues to try and achieve in terms of all its activities. And I was a little concerned because when I discovered that Nancy had died at the doors of City Hall, I had wandered in to pick up the copy of the agenda for that week and came across the information, and I had been there the day before, seen the tent and all put out. And I was just concerned that it was not listed on the police report, and I kept waiting for a news story, and I thought it would be appropriate that such an event would be newsworthy, that the city would take responsibility for acknowledging it. It wasn't even in the police report, so I'm very concerned about that. And if you can explain that to me, I'd appreciate it. Because Santa Barbara, where I used to live, just issued a report from the police, and there were 38 deaths that they had to investigate, and some of them were unhoused people. So I will be speaking later on at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Is there anybody online that wishes to give early oral communication?
Yes, our first online speaker, call-in user one. Go ahead, call-in user.
Yeah, hi there. This is Uriah Driscoll. I was calling in again. I got really kind of shocked about the, when I read about the Fire Department not being able to support protection at the Craftsman's Mall, if that were to ever get built. That just seems extremely negligent, so I agree with some of the earlier callers or earlier speakers about that. But I also was a little bit confused. I had, was under the impression from the city manager that the parking lot at the lower end of Fickle Hill Road was going to be on the agenda for at least initial discussion, and because of the major safety issues that have been brought forward, I just, I'm really shocked. I'm not sure what else you need in order to take some real strong actions. I mean, someone, my neighbor and Ms. Schaefer, one of your neighbors, got severely hurt. And right because of that, that parking lot has not been designed properly, has never been designed actually as a parking lot, and I traverse past that daily, sometimes two or three times, and it is always a mess. And I just do not see why this is not being taken more seriously. I'm really shocked at that. And, you know, I'm also, you know, my heart goes out to Nancy, who passed away at your doorstep. I think that there's some priorities that really need to be examined here. It is the health and safety of our community that's at stake, and time is of the essence. So please do not delay in taking serious action on addressing these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Uriah.
All right, our next speaker is James. Go ahead, James.
Hello to everybody, and congratulations to Kimberly and Meredith. Officially, the change of the guard, and good luck to both of you. I wanted to address council and staff on the designation of the L Street Rails with Trails corridor as a linear park. The city staff met with the members of the Great Redwood Trail Committee last week to discuss Arcata's portion of the Great Redwood Trail, and that is relevant because the street corridor is the primary segment of the Great Redwood Trail between Somala and Alliance, running through the heart of the Creamery District. I have to assume the discussion about the L Street Cuplet was the topic at that time. Transportation Safety Committee made the recommendation for the designation of the L Street Linear Park and to abandon the K&L Cuplet on August 2nd. A petition has been circulating to support the recommendation. At present, there's roughly 670 people who have signed the petition, about 90 on outline and the balance on a paper petition. We have spoke to numerous signers that support the linear park and the preservation of the open spaces and L Street Rails with Trails corridor. They also support the alternative, some type of alternative to the K&L Cuplet, just basically not seeing that go through as far as a through road. I hope to keep this discussion about L Street Linear Park fresh in the council's mind. Any council members or community members who would like more information can go to the L Street, excuse me, arcatalinearpark.org to find more information about the L Street Linear Park, and thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Our next speaker is Patricia. Go ahead, Patricia.
Um, yeah, I'd like to talk, we got, we got feedback going on our.
We got it there. That's Patricia.
Okay, so yeah, I would like to talk about why we do not have an emergency shelter in Arcata or in all of Humboldt County, but I think it's really the responsibility of our city and to actually provide an emergency shelter now and not wait. I don't understand why it's even been so long after the death of Nancy or even after the death of Rick Campos before her, who died in his tent of exposure. I think it's just, it just makes my heart sink that, you know, we're supposed to be a city that cares, and I don't really see that with this city and with the leadership of this city. And it shouldn't be left up to the nonprofit organizations to offer a space during extreme weather. We have to stand, you know, we have to step up and really offer that to our citizens. The State Community Center would be a great location. I know it's being advertised to rent out for events. I don't see why the hesitation for an emergency shelter. And then also the Crabs Ball Field, I think is a great location as well. I just, I just, you know, it's also been quoted that Nancy, you know, refused shelter when she was offered shelter, but it's kind of ignoring the fact that there was no shelter to offer her and her, and her dog. So anyways, I just really think that we need to get an emergency shelter up tonight, tomorrow. It's just really negligent of our city. So thank you. I'll be bringing it up until I see an emergency shelter. Thank you again.
Thank you, Patricia.
Okay, we have no more online communications.
Okay, well, that will bring us to the end of our early oral communications. Our next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, the item can be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. Okay, it's a long one. Item A is to approve the minutes of the city council meeting of November 16th, 2022. Item B, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of December 7th, 2022. C, biweekly report on dispersments, 11-5, 2022 through 11-28, 2022. D, biweekly report on dispersments for 11-29, 2022 through 12-10, 2022. E, adopt ordinance number 1560, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending solid waste management provisions of the Arcata Municipal Code to incorporate mandatory organic waste disposal reduction requirements, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. Item F, adopt ordinance number 1561, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending the Arcata Municipal Code pertaining to the California Building Code and Companion Codes Title 8 Building Regulations, Chapter 1 Building Codes, Articles 1 through 9, 11, 13, and 14, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. Item G, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. Item H, approve contract amendment in the amount of $8,111.26 for additional work performed by Kernan Construction for the 2022 Arcata Asphalt Grindout and Inlay Project. Item I, approve the design and award a construction contract for the 2022 Annual Sidewalk Improvement Project, Rebid to RAO Construction Company Incorporated in the amount of $116,618 base bid plus additive alternative number one, and authorize the city engineer to approve change orders and increase the contract amount by up to $23,323.60, 20%, for a total of $139,941.60 to allow for any unforeseen contingencies and additional work as necessary, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Item J, adopt resolution number 223-27, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending the class and pay resolution, compensation, and benefits for hourly-rated, part-time, temporary, and seasonal personnel to reflect the January 1st, 2023 change in state minimum wage and new position of professional expert. Item K, adopt resolution number 223-25, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata, authorizing approval to apply for the California Energy Commission 1% interest loan and find the project exempt from CEQA pursuant to California Code of Regulations, Title 14, Section 15301. Item L, approve an annual agreement between the Wiat Tribe and the city of Arcata for cultural resource monitoring services and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. Item M, appoint the mayor and vice mayor to the Business of the Year Subcommittee with ceremonial authority to select a recipient for the 2023 City of Arcata Business of the Year Award and to present the award at the Arcata Chamber Leadership Awards. Item N, adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting plan for the Arcata Annie and Mary Trail Connectivity Project. Item O, adopt resolution number 223-26, authorizing the destruction of certain city records maintained by the city relating to the Department of City Manager, Contracts and Special Projects, Personnel, and City Clerk, Environmental Services, and Finance as permitted under Section 34090 of the California Government Code and the Secretary of State's Local Government Record Program. So would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Hi, I don't want to, sorry, Alex, I don't want to remove anything. I just have to recuse myself from item K. It looks like our CEA, Redwood Coast Energy Authority, has done the report for that. I work for them, so I will not be voting on item K. Thank you.
Okay, so we should pull that and vote on it separate? No, it does, okay. That doesn't matter. That's fine. Anybody?
Yes, this is Alex, and I would like to remove, I think it's E now, solid waste.
Yes, that is item E. Okay. Anybody else? I would like to remove item N. Just to ask one quick clarifying question.
There's a call-in user with a hand up. Would you like to remove?
Okay, and so now we'll take it out to the public. Any members of public want to remove an item? Joanne, we'll do in person first. C and B?
C and D.
D.
And O.
And O. Okay. And our caller online?
Hi there. Yeah, well, you are pulling item N. I would like to comment on that. So I pressed *9 right before you took that off, so.
Okay, when we get to N, we will move back to public comment on that item. Okay. So do I have a motion to approve items A, B, and F through M?
I move, this is Alex.
Okay, so hold on, Joanna. B as in boy or D as in dog? All three of them? Okay, there we go. Okay, so A and then F through M.
I would move for approval. Alex.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Stillman and a second by Councilmember Atkins Salazar, all in favor. Aye. Okay, so motion carries unanimously for A and F through M. So we'll turn it over. Item B, we'll move over to comment on that.
I just had the opportunity today, sitting and reflecting on this winter solstice, to read some of the packet that you guys get all the time, but it's not always easy for me to read it online, and it's not easy to read it over in the hard copy there because it's attached to the wall, and I can't sit and look at it. But the minutes of the December 7th meeting that didn't really occur for very long, if it occurred because it wasn't a quorum, I'm trying to understand how the items that are on there were dealt with in terms of being no vote. How does that happen when you have minutes of a meeting that didn't really take place? So if somebody could give me clarification on that.
Well, most of those items have moved to this agenda, so pretty much almost all of them, except for.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
The council, even in a non-quorum situation, the council can move agenda items forward, and so they made a motion, by consensus in essence, the couple that were here, to move the majority of that agenda forward to this meeting with the exception of two items, which were the Westwood Gardens Appeal and the discussion of the fees around that appeal, which was moved to the January 4th meeting. So they can do that much without a quorum in that meeting.
Okay, I guess it just wasn't clear. It almost looked like there were things acted upon at that meeting that really didn't exist. Okay, so that was all I needed is clarification as a average citizen. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve item B.
I'll second. Okay. Motion by Councilmember Atkins Salazar and a second by Vice Mayor Matthews, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Okay, so motion B passes, and then we'll move to C.
So thank you again. My name's Joanne McGary, and I'm a resident of Arcata and a curious person in addition to that. And when I see all the listings on the agenda packet of the or agenda packet of the dispersments, which I mean is what the city spent on certain things, it's itemized very, you know, vaguely and um linearly in a way that, you know, there's a lot of US banks, so I'm just assuming that's a business card usage that it all gets listed and such. But um, I'm glad you changed the name of it from warrants to dispersment. It's a lot clearer. But it's also just sometimes vague enough that when you're looking down at, you're trying to figure out, you know, why is one person or one business or um something getting paid three times on the same date? And I know we've got a change in the finance offices as well, and it doesn't need to be necessarily answered today, but I think sometimes things are so dense on this agenda, and I'm so dense, that um trying to understand how it all works is kind of, I've decided I want to understand it better. So, I'm just tossing it out there that the, the listing of the allocations of dispersments or whatever is so um sort of vague, and sometimes some of us may ask a question about something specific. And today I don't really have anything, but um it, it's just sort of an interesting document, and I just wanted to share my um point of view on that. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
So, does that cover C and D then?
And D, okay.
I move that we um pass uh items C and D, biweekly risk partner dispersments, 11-5, 22 through 11-28, 22, and 11-29, 22 through 12-10, 22.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimously pass, C and D. Okay, and now we're moving on to item E, and Alex, I believe you had pulled that, so go ahead. Alex, did you want to comment on item E?
I, no, I'm on my, I'm sorry, I'm on my phone, and so I have to go back and forth between the agenda and uh the meeting. So, I, I have definite concern, I seem to have different concerns about having the um, how we're going to actually deal with that solid waste and how it's going to be just, where is it going to go? Is it going to actually go into the green waste can, or is it going to be some other method so that, I just don't, I don't understand how it's going to actually happen, and maybe there's some way that we can have that information. Maybe I can be more informed, I guess I would say.
Yeah, Emily, if you want to go ahead and, and take that quick question, because I, I know we did kind of um cover that extensively. I mean, Emily, Emily Benve gave us a lovely presentation just about basically how, we don't know how we're going to do that yet, but to get into compliance, this is the step we have to first take.
No, I understand that, but I guess I'm more into the, what is the final detail going to be, and when would that be worked out? And so, if we adopt this today, when can we expect to figure out how it's going to actually work? And that's my concern.
Great, well, good evening, council members. Um, Emily Synchron with the Environmental Services. Um, and this agenda item to adopt ordinance 1560, um, your, the introduction of this ordinance came two meetings ago. Um, and Deputy Director Emily Benve gave a, you know, thorough presentation of the intent of the ordinance and then what our next steps are, as we know that compliance with the state's 1383 organics recycling, recycling of food waste is very complicated. And um Emily has been a leader working with other leaders in the region to figure out how we're going to implement all that is required of us from the state. So, there's many moving pieces. One of the moving pieces um is a requirement by the state to adopt an ordinance detailing how the jurisdiction plans to implement the components of uh 1383. And that needs to occur by the end of this year or by January 1st. Um, there are components, the reason that we're bringing it to you late in the years, we tried to figure out as much as we could um by our deadline for meeting that. Um, and then Emily really outlined what the next steps are and um the timeline. The key thing, um, and I could go into more detail, but we do not yet have a place for organics to be delivered in the region to then be processed and eventually composted. Humboldt Waste Management Authority is working um on that process and have dedicated a component of their facility for that. Um, and RFP for, uh, too much detail, I'll keep it, try to keep it more simple. Um, so that is one big component. Um, this ordinance does outline that we um would intend to have a three-container system to um answer Councilmember Stillman's question. Um, we currently have a green waste pilot. It is yet to be determined how it would roll out um for a three-container system, but that is quite a bit down the road. Our next step will, um, we're starting negotiations with our franchise hauler Recology to figure out how it will work on the ground and what services Recology would provide versus the city, versus the county, and all of our partners. Um, we anticipate having, uh, bringing a draft franchise agreement for the council's consideration in late spring. Um, and with that would also be a rate analysis and um a uh hearing and process for determination of rates for solid waste collection. And so, we anticipate that would all be coming in the spring and summer of this next year. So, I hope that answers some timeline questions and the reason that we're bringing this adoption of the ordinance to your council's agenda tonight.
Well, thank you very much for that. And I do know some people, like myself, we have uh, we ha, we have people that are picking up our compost on a regular basis, but I know they can't meet the uh requirements that are going to be needed in the future. So, I'm glad to hear that we have time to figure this out. Thank you very much, Emily.
Great. Are there any other comments on this agenda item? Yes, okay, look like we have some people coming up. Take it away.
Yeah, thanks. Um, my name's Joanne McGary, and I had the opportunity to attend a uh Eureka City Council meeting a few weeks ago, because I sometimes like to see how different municipalities operate, and they do things a little bit differently. One of the things that they did, and it was outside the uh chambers there, is they had a little booklet that kind of explained what they're doing in terms of their organic waste. It was kind of a cul, not a coloring book, a comic book. It was, you know, something very simple and um had a lot of illustration and, and such, and I thought I had it in my go-bag, but I don't. Um, but um I was sort of impressed that they had something for the people um to understand a little more basically what this ordinance was about, because it is a regional concept that everybody's discussing. And I know that you have a deadline to present something to the state to show that you're in good faith trying to do something. I think this particular ordinance is so, so convoluted and disappointing in regards to that we aren't doing something now um for our organic waste, and that it's going to be a sort of a mandatory insistence on a, a third bin, and people are going to have to pay for it whether they want to or not. And I'm just hoping there's going to be a lot of wiggle room once the state sees what we're doing, um, that we can change what we're doing to make something a little bit simpler, better, um, local, and more decentralized. Um, you know, as I spoke last time, um, you know, we can't keep throwing things away, be, because there is no way. We can't just keep taking things away from our community. We've got to deal with it where it's at, and we've got to reduce it in the first place, so we don't have so much of it. But this ordinance, I understand why it's moving forward, but it's so, again, dense and convoluted, and um I just want something simpler and better for our community. So, I just, and, and I would like you to take a look at what Eureka created, because we need more of that in Arcata, because there are people like me who can't get through the verbiage of the bureaucratic stuff on the piece of paper, and um having something visible and tangible in my hand um is a thumbs up. And I talk to people all the time about this ordinance, and everybody doesn't know, and they say, what are we supposed to do? And I say, call City Hall, because that's all I can tell them. Um, but I say, go forward with this ordinance because you have to, but I wish it wasn't so convoluted. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. Um, sometime back uh on public television, I saw a pretty extensive report on recycling in America. I think they actually got a Peabody or award for this. And so, the question I have is that in this reporting, well, first with recycling, very difficult for some people to get it right, and they follow the waste stream to the plant. But the most disturbing part about it is that we were all relying on China to take all this recycling, and they made a big decision that they weren't going to do that anymore. So, in this report, basically warehousing all of this recycling and very little of it, some cardboard um was being recycled, some metal cans, but all of it was pretty much going to the dump. So, my question for the city is, with this, with this as the guide, what is happening to our recycling? Is it being, is it really being recycling, or is it ending up at the dump? And I would give an example of cardboard, VC cardboard like a pizza box. They, they had this in the PBS where it was in a bale of maybe a ton of cardboard that was going to be recycled. The buyer came along and saw a little bit of grease on that one ton bale and rejected it, and it went to the dump. So, my understanding, reading through this quickly, is that greasy cardboard is now going into your organics. So, there's going to be a huge, uh, let's say, education for people, and right now I see a huge problem just with the regular recycling that's going on, that people aren't uh doing it very correctly. There are some that are very good, but a lot of them, it's terrible. It's, and, and I think PBS basically dot back, documented that, how they were conveyors and trying to grab all the stuff that wasn't supposed to be there. So, it's, it's very complicated, so I appreciate if we could get an answer of, uh, we're just starting with our own recycling program, whether it's really working or whether it's going to the dump. And um, I don't know, I, I support the idea of, of, I mean, organics makes a huge difference on, on our, our dumps, and, and it's terrible. But at the other side of this, I, I'm just really a skeptic on how it's going to work from the standpoint of getting people to comply with it, especially like apartment buildings where they have this bin and you're supposed to clean it out. And um what I see from right now is even when they pick up, recycling paper goes flying from all these bins, and nobody cleans it up. I'm talking about these smaller units, and there's one across the street from where I'm at, and nobody takes responsibility for any of this. It just goes all, all over the street, and it washes basically down the storm drains out to our wetlands and rivers. So, um, I see problems right now, and uh, so I hope you can figure it out. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, any more comment on item E?
Uh, I believe we have one comment. Patricia, did you have a comment on item E? Go ahead.
Um, yes, I've talked to you before uh about my love of compost. And um, so anyways, I was, I don't, you know, I just kind of want to remind uh and, and hope that there is space that um people could still compost on their own property and not have to ship their um waste out, you know, outside of our county um in this, in, you know, the name of uh environmentalism. So, I, because I don't think there's any better environmental, you know, I don't think there's any other, uh, better environmental process than being able to compost on your own land and your own waste. So, um, um, I'm hoping that there's still space with this um to let people um still use their backyard composting. And um also I want to remind, there was on another article out there with Recology that actually they got busted down in southern, um, down south in the Bay Area for um a scandal of actual bribery with um certain city officials. Um, so I know we're going to be relying on them um in, you know, in, in the initial half of this. So, hopefully the city can actually um get their own processing plant up and running. Um, it, hopefully, um, in some type of time, time, you know, frame quickly. Um, so we're not relying on that outside company um for our composting waste. So, um anyways, thank you for letting me talk about compost again. Thanks.
Thank you, Patricia. Okay, any more comments on item E?
Nope.
All right, I move to adopt ordinance number 1560, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending solid waste management provisions of the Arcata Municipal Code to incorporate mandatory organic waste disposal reduction requirements, waive reading of text and consent to read by title only.
And so, I would second that, but I would like to really think about digesters, which we talked about back in 2014. And so, I, I will second it, but I really want us to be innovative in what we're going to do. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion passes unanimously. Okay, and the next thing, um, I had polled item N, and then there was also a caller interested in discussing item N. Um, I just wanted, you know, like the, the really quick update, because I know we're going to have this later in our meeting tonight, but just that we're seeing um this before. I know a lot of us haven't really had much discussion about the Annie and Mary Trail um that are serving on this council. So, if there was just like a quick one-minute staff report before we have our update later, that would be excellent.
I might not make it one minute, but we'll try. Um, so the um Arcata Annie and Mary Trail Connectivity Project is a priority project of the council for this fiscal year. It's a component of a regional trail priority that's been around for over 20 years. Um, the city had a planning grant, um, and through that process in 2019, the council um selected a preferred alternative along the railroad corridor. Since that time, the city has received an active transportation grant, wrote that, we, we wrote that proposal and received that, and that combined with other funding is funding the current effort. We're in the first phase. It's the project approval and environmental documentation phase that has been going on this last year, um, working with our project partners, the county, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, Caltrans, Great Redwood Trail Agency, and our consultants. We did a series of technical studies um and composed a initial study, CEQA document, um, and into a mitigated negative declaration CEQA document, um, and really outlined that the project has some potential environmental impacts, but with mitigation and avoidance, um, we do not think that there will be any significant impacts. Um, the trail is 3.5 miles connecting the Arcata Skate Park up to um connecting to the Valley West neighborhood over the Giantoli Overpass, and then to um the Mad River. Um, so there are some smaller wetland impacts, biological resource impacts potentially, that we will mitigate in a mitigation and monitoring uh program. And um that this document, CEQA document, was um circulated for the past most of November into December. We had several outreach opportunities for people to give input. We received no formal comments, but the comments that we did receive in the document are addressed as far as how we will address them, or if they are already addressed in the uh plan. And um it's an opportunity to adopt um this CEQA document in order for um us to, in order for the city to be on the California Transportation Commission agenda in January, um, to then start our next phase, so to get our allocation of design and right-of-way funding.
That was pretty close to a minute. Wonderful. Okay, thank you for, yeah, that quick explanation. Um, and then I believe we have public comment on this item as well.
Yes, Uriah, go ahead, unmute. There you go.
Yeah, hi there. Uh, Uriah Driscoll. Um, well, you know, uh, the, you know, trail concept is great. Um, the Annie Mary as part of that, though, it's uh starts at West End Road by West Greens and goes out to the uh pump station park. Um, I always thought would be a great trail. Actually, um, I used to ride my horses on it back in the day, um, when it was still a rail, actually. And, but recently the uh SCB determined that that uh section of trail, a rail rather, excuse me, had been uh abandoned back in the 1980s, which was prior to the NCRA um development, uh, you know, um, pe, uh, creation, and uh, which was obviously prior to the GRTA. So, uh, part of that discovery was that the um, the uh NCRA had not been able to determine or provide proof that they actually bought it from, which, excuse me, which was the Eureka Southern Railroad. Um, so I'm not sure in that section of rail or trail that there is a fee, title, or any easement left. Um, there'd be no real reason for NCRA to have purchased something that had been abandoned. Now, I had provided those documents, I got those documents from an STB attorney. I provided those to NETRA and the city, the county, everyone else that was involved in that. So, I'm, I, I, I'm really surprised. I haven't seen any indication that that has been re- So I'm, I, I'm really surprised, I haven't seen any indication that that has been resolved. You know, and the S T B ruling was that, you know, the N C R A really did not have ownership of that. So I think that that needs to be resolved somewhere or another. Now, if there's, what the intent is, is to purchase those easements from the adjacent landowners, okay, that's one thing. Maybe that is in the works. Maybe Emily can discuss that at some point. But anyway, I, I think there's a lot of issues that, from my perspective, haven't been resolved at all yet. And, and there's, it's pretty well documented that the Annie Mary part of that, which is from Corplex, West End, or West Green rather, all the way out to Blue Lake, was not under the ownership of the N C R A. So anyway, that's, that my interpretation of it, and I think that needs to be resolved. Obviously, having a trail going out to that pump station park would be great. That's all I've got for now.
Okay. And that was your perfect three minutes. Okay. Thank you, Uriah. Okay. So do we have a, a motion for item N?
I'll make a motion for item N.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. And then I believe I circled item O. We polled item O as well. I don't recall. I didn't write who polled that one.
I think Joanne did.
Okay. Yeah. You polled item O. Yes, we've, we've made it to the end.
Okay. I just think with all that's happened in the past, the recent past, talking about destroying records of the city, it should just be spoken out loud as to why this is happening and what specifically is being destroyed, just so people, I pulled it out so that we could have an explanation, not just a line item on the consent calendar. So if somebody can explain to me what this is all about and what is being destroyed and what are the dates and all that kind of stuff, if that's possible.
So I can try, I guess, and then maybe Bridgette, you can, yeah, because I just-
Aren't they all digitalized anyway, right?
Pardon me?
That's what I've been told. We, we had this in the past and I believe most of these items that do get destroyed are digitized and, you know, they're just taking up room in physical paper in, in offices.
So it's physical paper. If somebody can, you know, just outline what is being destroyed, you know, in its form and if there's still going to be a record.
I think it's probably in here what is being destroyed. And I just took a board clerk training class, so I'll try to speak to the fact that there is a calendar of records destructions and every three years or five years or seven years, things are allowed to be destroyed. They have to be signed off by our city attorney. So there is, there is definitely like a length of time to keep all of these things. And once they're not relevant or needed anymore, they can be destroyed. Bridgette, I mean, or somebody else can-
Well, so there's still a digitized copy, so that's, it's going to exist. No.
I just want to clarify.
Yeah.
For some, there are digitized copies. For others, there wouldn't be. But there is a full listing in the agenda packet that lists out each of the records and the city clerk will hand you that. And each of the departments and the date of the file and what they are. So that whole list is reviewed by the city clerk. It's also reviewed by the city attorney and then brought forward and that list is always published.
Okay. I, I thank you for that. I didn't get a chance to get that far in the agenda packet, but I know it's been sort of a question in the past and I'm not so much doing it for myself as just for the greater community to understand. Sometimes those of us who aren't just sitting at these tables and up on the dais need to kind of understand in plainer terms sometimes what's going on. So that's the only reason I brought it up. So thank you and I'm going to look at this, but understand, I just wanted it pulled so that it could be talked about. So thank you.
That's great. I'm glad we could explain it. I think every city, every J P A has these calendars for records destructions. So, but awesome. So is there any-
Need a motion and a second, so. Or I guess we need to see if there's any other public comment on this item.
Uriah, did you have a comment on the records destruction item or is your hand just still up?
Yeah, I, yeah, I was kind of shocked. I was trying to get some records from just a couple of years ago and found out that they were not available. It was like, wow, that doesn't really lend to much transparency. Often you need to know what the genesis of a certain, you know, process is. And I'm not even sure where the, what the genesis of this resolution is and how it's determined, you know, what records should, should just disappear. Because anyone putting in a public records request should be able to have access to information. And if all you get in response is, well, those, those records have been deleted because they're over two years old, that, that's really kind of disturbing to me. I, I mean, I think it's, it's really extremely important to know how things got developed and why are we, where we're at, if we're trying to deal with an issue. So I, I've got, you know, strong sentiments about this, but, you know, you're probably just going to pass it because that's what you do. And, but it's, it's really disturbing to me as a citizen who's trying to participate and trying to be educated about the process of things to not be able to really understand what that process, or how the process got developed. And the explanation that was provided just before I got on the line here was, did not provide any clarity at all. As a matter of fact, it seemed more convoluted and more confusing. So anyway, that's, it's pretty disturbing that this is even an issue, especially digitized stuff. There's room to store digitized records. That's not a problem. So anyway, that's my opportunity to speak and I thank you.
Okay. Any other comment on item O?
All right. I move to adopt resolution number 2223-26, authorizing destruction of certain city records maintained by the city relating to the Departments of City Manager, Contracts and Special Projects, Personnel, City Clerk, Environmental Services, and Finance as permitted under Section 34090 of the California Government Code and the Secretary of State's Local Government Records Program.
Stillman, seconds.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And with that, that brings us to the end of our consent calendar and we will move on to new business. So item A under new business is to introduce ordinance number 1562, amending the Arcata Municipal Code Title X, Chapter 3, Regulations for the Use of the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary to Update Overnight Time Restrictions. So can we have a staff report from Environmental Services Director Emily Sinclair, please?
Great. Good evening again, council members. So this is a introducing or considering the introduction of an ordinance to amend a section of the municipal code relating to the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary and in particular overnight time use restrictions. So as we all in Arcata recognize that the marsh is an extremely wonderful place for bird watching, habitat, walking, strolling, rolling. And it is one of the key places that residents and visitors really gravitate to, kind of all alike. And there's also challenges in maintenance of such a multi-use space for recreation, for habitat, for enhancement of our wastewater coming from our treatment plant. So there's a lot of, a lot of factors involved. And over the last, especially the last year or two, the city have, and community members have really noted that there have been an increase of incompatible uses within the marsh. And many, many of those coming from use of our, of the roadways through the marsh in particular on South Eye Street. And so the, the city has heard and has met with members of Friends of the Arcata Marsh, Cal Poly Humboldt, professors and wildlife experts, Redwood Region Audubon, and had conversations with other community members to really look at how can we both ensure our, you know, protection of our habitat and wildlife species and also ensure safety for people enjoying the marsh by walking and biking. And so some of the activities that the city has undertaken in this, these past couple months have been to consider a change in the overnight use times at the marsh, which we'll, I'll speak to more in a minute, as well as some updates on the South Eye Street. And so there's about three quarters of a mile of South Eye travel through the marsh. And just our streets crew has implemented a paving project on the northern part of South Eye, adding fog lines, which are more of a visual thing for drivers to slow down and to also look for other users on the roadway. We also enhanced a gravel shoulder for more of a separated walking area for, for pedestrians to really lead from Samoa Boulevard or close to Samoa Boulevard down to the trails in the marsh. We also enhanced signage for wildlife crossings and advisory speed limit of 15 miles per hour on the curves on South Eye Street. And so we really have noted and in working with, both within staff of Environmental Services and with the Arcata Police Department, that the times of use for the marsh are, are not consistent with other city parks and are also not consistent with the majority of other public access areas around the bay. And so coastal access is really important for the city, for the community, for the coastal commission. And we really wanted to look at, how could we look at, you know, updates to those times to ensure continued coastal access, especially for people coming on motorized vehicles, you know, all, all modes. But to make it to be something where it's consistent with other parks so that the existing gate that we have on South Eye Street could be more feasibly used in the operations of our police department. And speaking to that gate, we have gates at other city parks and facilities, the community center, Redwood Park. And these facilities are, you know, are open or closed between sunset and sunrise. So we really were looking at ways to, again, make that, you know, more consistent. We had support and interest from volunteers of Foam, Friends of the Arcata Marsh, to conduct some surveys of the number of parked vehicles at different times of the later evening and early morning and where, you know, where those cars were located. That informed just the interest and a need to see about a change of overnight use times. And so what is being proposed in the ordinance today is a change to the marsh being closed from one hour after sunset to sunrise. That one hour after sunset is consistent with Humboldt Bay Wildlife Refuge, other public access areas around the bay. And it also enables, I mean, the marsh is one of the best places to watch a sunset. So it still enables that, you know, great type of use of coastal access use. So the, that's just an introduction for the intent and how, you know, we got here to be bringing that to the council. And so what is in your packet is a suggested amendments to this component of the municipal code. We did have just today some helpful input from a boating user at, you know, throughout, throughout Humboldt. And they brought up a kind of interesting and I think helpful point in that there may be instances where different users may, you know, the best time to access the marsh might be before sunrise, whether that is to bring your boat to the soon-to-be constructed new boat launch at the end of South Eye at high tide. That high tide might be at, you know, 5:30 in the morning before, before sunrise. And it could be for, you know, research to happen at the marsh or for, you know, other birding uses. And so in the, what is in your packet, in the suggested amended language, is the change, you know, in these times. And it, we included that times could have an exception if there were special events happening at the interpretive center. The interpretive center is a place for meetings and, or other, other activities. And so we thought it might be helpful to have some exceptions for, you know, compatible uses to get, you know, permission to access the marsh from South Eye at an earlier time than sunrise. So what was included in a blue folder item to the council and what is up on the screen here in the chambers is a suggested, on the bottom is a suggested update from what is in your packet for Section 10605, to instead kind of simplify the language and to say that, you know, the areas of the marsh shall be, you know, parking and motorized, motorized vehicle access will be prohibited along South Eye in the interpretive center parking lot between these times of one hour after sunset and to sunrise, except for special events and permits issued or authorized by the city. So it is for the council's consideration to have the discussion, to consider the, the language as this potential update on the bottom of your screen. And I am happy to take comments and questions.
Wonderful. Okay. So do we have any questions or comments from the council? I'll let others go first for, for the first time now. Yeah, go ahead.
So I know you mentioned the interpretive center on G Street will also be locked. And as folks know who spend any time down, there's a lot of RVs and campers down there. So if they're not moved out before, they'll be locked in. And they'll get out in the morning. But I guess more of my question is, it says that they're not going to be prohibited to be parking there, but yet seems like we have a lot of folks that are going to be down there because they don't have anywhere else to go.
Great. So thank you for that question. So this ordinance is proposing to utilize the existing infrastructure that we have in the marsh. And so there is a gate that is existing on South Eye Street that is just south or just beyond the first gravel parking area. And then the South G Street parking lot at the interpretive center does not have a gate and is currently not proposed to have a gate, but that the overnight use times would be updated to discourage parking overnight. The gate, these potential times for changing of overnight use would enable the Arcata Police Department before that one hour or at that one hour after sunset to drive through the South Eye Street area and remind people that we're closing the gate here pretty soon. Here's the times that are posted. And then to do that type of run-through before closing the gate. That would not be occurring at the South G Street. That could be a future conversation. And the kind of citations for parking of over a certain period of time, like, could kind of continue at the, you know, just the current, you know, code enables. But there's not a plan for change of operations at the interpretive center parking lot.
Thank you.
I, I was just wondering, by changing the hours, one of the concerns was if, you know, if staff at A P D would actually have, you know, time in their schedules to be able to do that. I know it kind of depends on what's going on. But do, do they think that they'll be able to participate in this and make it more of a, a standard procedure?
Yeah. So Environmental Services have met, you know, several times with staff from A P D and they're supportive of the time change being in line with other city parks and that would make it much more feasible to be part of their patrols, much like the kind of operations of our other gates at city facilities. You know, that is on the list of the, you know, what can happen during the patrol. There's a lot of things that come up. But in particular, when there are either, you know, times of, we're, we're seeing in one certain place has, you know, more of those type of less compatible uses at a certain facility, then it can be more prioritized to close that gate every day and kind of shift types of behavior. And so the, that's just a long way to, you know, say that this, A P D has said this would fit- And so that's just a long way to, you know, say that this, APD has said this would fit within their schedule and it will be part of the, you know, consideration for operations of the marsh as well.
So to clarify, like, before, it wasn't being locked or unlocked on a regular basis?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It has not been locked or unlocked on a regular basis. It is, and it, you know, it has, it's not, it hasn't been a regular basis because of the times to close at midnight and open for is not feasible with the overnight, you know, staffing and needs of being out throughout the city for APD.
That makes sense. And I just want to clarify that we're just introducing this ordinance tonight. If people have things they'd like to comment on, we're not going to pass this ordinance until a future meeting, correct?
Yes, correct. So the recommendation is to introduce the ordinance as revised during the council discussion if we choose to, if the council would choose to go with the language on the bottom of that screen. And then also to adopt the sequo exemption that we are recommending and is detailed in the staff report.
So I have a question just about, I like this language to add the, you know, caveat for special events and permits and stuff. But, I mean, is there an existing process for that already or would this add, you know, an extra job to Environmental Services? And then just kind of how would that work? I know, like, if you rent out Redwood Park, you come and you get the key to the bathrooms, you know, would it be a similar, like, you check out a key and you can open the gate yourself or would somebody have, you know, would we have to have an officer come open the gate? Because that seems like, you know, a little too much staff work on our end for that. So just, I don't know, do we have a process for that figured out?
Yeah. No, thanks for that question. For the, we have a process in place for renting the interpretive center or hosting events there, it's more likely. And so that is already a process in place. Environmental Services does review and grant nature area entry permits, which is, you know, our existing process for considering often their research-related permits, also access to cultural areas. So that is one existing process. And Environmental Services feels the details of working out how to, if the gate is closed, you know, having the, you know, checking out a key, things like that, where it could be worked out within our existing processes and not be a burden on staff time.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any more questions or comments, or Alex as well, from council? And then we can go to public comment.
Oh, I was just going to say, I know that the FOM people have been really concerned about this and they've done a lot of their survey work for it. In fact, I actually did one survey for them. And I think that this is a good way to go. And when you want to do specific things, you can always check out a key through the APD. And that might be a way for us to make it work because you have to think ahead. And if you know you're going to be doing something, you want to think not at the last minute. But I would support this.
Okay. Thank you, Alex. Go ahead.
I was just hoping that somebody could, the acronym, not everybody knows what FOM is, Friends of Arcata Marsh. Just for the audience.
Then I was just going to answer quickly. This will come back to you for consideration for adoption on January 4th.
And I just had one clarifying thing, Director Sinkhorn. I know that, you know, we originally had it in our packet, and then you said that you got a helpful phone call today and, you know, made some changes. And I just want to, I'm assuming that, that because you're presenting us with the changes, this is a recommendation? That's my assumption. So I just want to be really clear that, you know, that you are recommending this and not the other for your professional opinion.
Yeah, thank you. I would say that, you know, we've had conversations with a number of community members and organizations about this process over the last, a number of months. And, you know, especially about understanding of, you know, the time to open, you know, at being sunrise. And so that was really in all of our conversations, you know, support for that. And I think, you know, just the additional input today was helpful to note that there are probably some very compatible exceptions to accessing the marsh before sunrise. And especially, we have many existing, again, nature area entry permits for research. So they could be studying birds or bats and need to drive in some equipment, you know, before that time. So there's, this really fits that in addition to, you know, heading out from the boat launch at high tide. So I think there's many uses. So yes, it is a recommendation and it has been reviewed by the city attorney.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
Okay. If we don't have any more council questions or comments right now, we'll take it out to public comment. So we'll start with the in-person comment first and then we will move to online. So if you're online, feel free to raise your hand and get ready. And if you're here, get in line. Go ahead, Joanne.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary. I live close to the marsh and I try to go there often. I actually have to say that I definitely try and go there during daylight hours because as it gets dark and if I'm by myself, I do not feel safe. But I also want to speak to the exceptional uses or the different events that might happen. And I've been participating in the past with the lantern ceremony that's out at Clop Lake. And when I first started working with that group for that event, it does happen after sunset because you want the lanterns to shine on the lake. And people use the canoes, which is also an exception on that water. But one of the things I really tried to institute, and as we look at ordinances like this in the future, the connection between an ordinance like this to preserve a wildlife habitat or a recreational space in our community, looking at why we need to not have it open to people overnight and what are some alternatives for people who utilize it overnight. And also for the different activities, even in terms of the impact of cars driving through that marsh. So as we start to look at what we're creating ordinances about, I'd like us to extend it to some of the other issues that are impacting our habitat. The Montreal Biodiversity COP Conference 15 just took place and they agreed to a 30-30 thing about preserving habitat. And I know this may seem a little tiny speck of a wildlife habitat in the whole scheme of the global issue, but we have to start in our own backyard, so to speak. And so looking at overnight use, closing things off for safety of the habitat and for the users is really good. But also the kind of use that occurs 24 hours a day or in the daylight hours of that place, just really start thinking, because when we talk about the Climate Action Plan, transportation is a big issue in terms of greenhouse gases. And there's a hell of a lot of people driving up and down Eye Street to get to Clop Lake in their individual cars. It is a danger to some of the habitat in crossing the roads. There's a lot of speeding that goes on. So I just look at this ordinance as the beginning of many other, what I would like to call climate action ordinances that we need to start looking at and expanding upon. And so I'm glad that it's going to be revisited at a later date before you vote on it. And this is the first I heard of it, so I'm glad I came tonight to learn a little bit more. So thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Do we have anyone online wanting to comment on this item?
We do. Our first speaker is Scott. Go ahead, Scott. Go ahead, Scott. We can't hear you, but you appear to be unmuted.
I've clicked all the buttons I think I need. Can you hear me now?
Yep, you got it. Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Scott Frazier. I'm a frequent user of the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary. I support Friends of the Arcata Marsh and Wedward Region Audubon in their efforts to work with the City of Arcata to reduce and potentially eliminate the adverse impacts of illegal overnight camping occurring in the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary. The adverse impacts of camping, as well as speeding and unregulated parties, need to be addressed to maintain the benefits of ecotourism that the marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary create. Locked gates are needed both at the G Street access and Eye Street. G Street currently has a recreational vehicle behind a pickup truck overflowing with debris for the past three days. On the change of time from 4:00 AM to sunrise, there needs to be additional clarification. And I think I would thank Emily Sinkhorn for her comments about recreational boating. Hope there's not too much feedback. That the new facility and the historic facility both are affected by tidal regime. And it would be unfortunate to have a brand-new facility and not be able to access it depending on the elevations at the boat.
Scott, do you know what's causing that feedback?
I think it's my remote microphone.
Okay, that's better.
But again, I thank both Emily Sinkhorn and the city attorney for their thoughtful approach to a way to address this. But because of the public and coastal access issues, I think we probably should have a more detailed conversation about how this special event approach might work. But again, I appreciate the city, staff, manager, and council in their interest to improve and maintain the high-quality recreational facilities that you have at the Arcata Marsh. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comment, Scott. Is there anybody else online waiting to comment on this item?
No more online comment on this item.
Okay. Well, I will bring it back to the council for any follow-up questions or comments about what we've heard this evening. And if not, we will take a motion on the item.
I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1562 as amended in tonight's meeting, amending the Arcata Municipal Code Title 10, Chapter 3, Regulations for Use of the Arcata Marsh and Wildlife Sanctuary to Update Overnight Time Restrictions, Wavereading of the Text, and Consent to Read by Title Only, and to Adopt a Sequa Exemption Pursuant to California Code of Regulations Title 14, Sections 15307 and 15308.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Atkins Salazar and a second from Vice Mayor Matthews. Any further final discussion before we vote? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. And that will take us now to item B in new business, to authorize an amendment to the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Program contract with Plan West Partners and a budget adjustment totaling $118,000 for additional Form-Based Code scope of services. We have a staff report from Community Director.
I need to recuse myself.
Okay. So Councilmember Atkins Salazar is going to fill up her water and then recuse herself. And we will then have a staff report from Community Development Director, David Loyah.
Yeah, we will recuse Alex online as well.
I was just going to say that I will not be commenting on anything, but I don't want to hang up my phone because I'll lose you all.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and newly-elected council member. I'm David Loyah, the Director of Community Development. And before you tonight is a recommendation from the Planning Commission to authorize using $118,000 of general fund monies to approve an increase in the scope of work for our Form-Based Code. You'll recall from August 23rd, joint study session with the Planning Commission and the City Council. The City Council really tasked the Planning Commission to identify the resources that it would need to be able to make a solid recommendation to the City Council on these planning amendments, the Form-Based Code, the Gateway Area Plan, and the General Plan Amendments. They've been working since that time on a very regular basis, going through, you know, identifying the concerns that they have and the potential solution set and using that solution set as a recommendation. So this is the first of maybe a couple of different recommendations that comes from the Planning Commission to the City Council to either, you know, amend scope or identify new scope to, you know, to get this work done. You know, I'll note that to date, all of this work has been really bootstrapped. We've been only spending what we could capture through, you know, either entitlements that had contributions towards this work or, so those would be planning permits that had a condition of approval to contribute to this effort, or through grant-funded sources. And to date, it's really only been grant-funded sources that have contributed because the entitled projects never moved forward to the stage where they made those payments. So if you can look on packet page 296, this is attachment B. And in B, we tried to put together for you what the existing scope of work is. You'll notice on that packet page, under Exhibit B, at the top, there's a table. And at the very bottom of that table, Bullet Item 4, Gateway Area Plan Form-Based Code, had $16,830 attributed to it. And so we were, we were working with sort of a budget model, if you will, of a Form-Based Code. In, I believe it was September, we started looking at trying to increase the scope of work and build in more features to it. And we presented in October, what you'll see in Attachment C, to the Planning Commission, a revised scope of work. That revised scope of work was approximately $100,000 estimated. We didn't have $100,000 at that time. And so we, you know, thanked Ben Noble, our consultant who's working on the Form-Based Code, and said, you know, we just don't have the money to do this. It's a nice-to-have but not need-to-have. From that scope of work, we broke off a couple of things where we did have some flexibility. The council originally approved a not-to-exceed limit for the, all of the planning work that was in excess of what we actually contracted for. So we had a little bit of wiggle room and we entered into an amendment, and that's Attachment B2. So Attachment B1 and B2 really reflect the existing scope of work that the city is working on for the Form-Based Code. And you'll see that in packet page 300, we have effectively added, you know, $30,720. So now we're, you know, we're up to about $40,000, you know, $46,000 is what we're looking at for our Form-Based Code. A lot of this work was going to require staff to do the outreach engagement, to, you know, conduct the work with the community. And it's become really apparent that the community's appetite for, you know, having really rich experiences with the Form-Based Code warrants additional, you know, support from our consultant. So that's where the revised scope of work that you'll see in Attachment A came from. We asked Ben to pull together something that would address some of the things that we were hearing in the community, you know, the desire to have real, a better understanding of what the max build-out form might look like. And so you'll see that as, you know, a massing diagram on Bullet Number 5 on packet page 282. There's also this testing opportunity sites, Item Number 4. And he's given examples of these in your packet as well to show you what you'd be looking at. And so with these opportunity sites, we'd be able to build out a little bit more graphical representation, not necessarily that that's exactly what will be approved there, but what could be approved under the existing conditions to really give a visual for the council, the Planning Commission, and the community, you know, what these new codes might look like in our, our community. In addition, there's a lot more engagement that will be led by our consultant that's really directed at trying to, as we've been trying from the start, to get a community design, something that the, you know, that folks have really had the opportunity to participate in weighing in on these standards that we would use to judge future projects. So with all of that being said, what we're asking for tonight is for the council to approve a $118,000 contract amendment for additional Form-Based Code scope of services and find that the action is exempt from sequo as it's not a project. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but that's what I prepared for a staff report.
All right. I guess I'll start. This is something our general fund can handle.
It is. You certainly have those funds in reserve. You are exceeding this fiscal year, your stated goal for reserve. You know, some of us believe we can never have enough in reserve, but the truth is, part of the responsibility is also to get that money out to where the need is. So you will still continue to exceed your reserve limit for this fiscal year. We are just in the process of closing out and starting audit testing on last fiscal year. So I'm also confident that you will be adding money into your reserve from that. So I'm also confident that you will be adding money into your reserve from that, too, that can be used towards us.
Okay. All right. So I'm reading this, and it seems like... So I know that at this study session, that we totally told the Planning Commission that, you know, whatever they want, we would do our best to provide to them. So I'm happy to do that. I also know that the community really felt like there was not a lot of outreach. So I'm very happy to see some, you know, real tangible, like, great examples of outreach we're doing. What I'm concerned about is that it seems that there's a lot of money spent for outreach and not as much money for the actual code development. So I'm wondering if there's going to, if there could be like some kind of midway point during all of this outreach, is we're not, and this is where I'm going to encourage the community, to participate in this outreach because it seems like we're going to be spending a lot of money on it. And I would like an opportunity to revisit it if we're not really capturing the part of the community that we hope to capture and kind of, you know, spend more money on the code itself if we're not capturing as much outreach as we want. I mean, I think that the idea behind this is, you know, to really get input and to show people what things are going to look like and to, you know, really give people a rich opportunity to dig into what form-based codes look like. And it's really interesting. I mean, it really is. But I would like to see kind of like a midpoint where we can sort of assess, you know, how much of the community we're reaching. Do we need to pivot and like find different ways to reach people? And if we're not reaching the people that we want to, can we kind of pull some money out of the outreach and put it into the actual codes itself? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that does make a lot of sense. And I think we can absolutely build that into the process where we're checking in to make sure that, you know, we're accomplishing the goals for the outreach. I also want to point out that if you look on packet page 283, which breaks down the total budget, you know, there's $49,000, you know, for Noble, $46,000 for UFS. UFS is assigned purely to doing the graphics work, providing the, you know, they're an architectural firm. They provide the background documents that we'll need to either do the engagement and/or refine those into the code. And that, you know, approximately, you know, $15,000 of the $49,000 that's going to Ben Noble is really around adding to the code. So the $46,000 and then the $15,000, you know, approximately $60,000 is going towards the code itself. And then that's being added to the approximate, you know, $46,000 that we have currently budgeted, which is almost all primarily going to the code. Staff is really intending to carry the engagement for the majority of that. Ben had a couple of times when he was pegged to come to various commission meetings and, you know, and be there to answer questions, but really, he was focused on writing that code. So we really do have, you know, this is a large increase in the budget for outreach, but we really do have a large, the large share, the largest share of these funds are, and the existing funds that are committed to this work are dedicated to developing the actual form-based codes. So I hope that addresses your initial concern.
Yeah, it does. And again, I'm really happy that we're, you know, reading the room and making, you know, the effort to do all this outreach and give people what they want to hear. Another concern I have is we're so far behind in this process, you know? I feel like we do a lot of talking about it. And with all of this added outreach, I just want to know, like, how much farther we're pushing this down the road? I would like, I don't know if there's like caveat that could come with this, but I would like, you know, some kind of time that you think would be, you know, reasonable to say, "All right, we've done all this outreach, we have done all this form-based code, this is when we're going to start to make some decisions." And I was wondering if, you know, like July is something that's reasonable for that, which seems also really far, but...
Yeah, we've, you know, in anticipation of this work and really to, you know, understand how we can incorporate the new engagement into the recommendation of the Planning Commission, we've kind of worked out a timeline for that. And we do have the majority of the engagement going through April, May, early May. And so, you know, my hope is that with the engagement that we've done to date and this added engagement, and the commitment of our code writer to, you know, producing drafts, you know, timely, that we would be able to meet that July deadline. You know, at this point, the, you know, we've seen the public process continue to expand, and we've had to reset our goals for production on this multiple times. You know, I think this is a, you know, to some extent, it's a, you know, a matter of going slow to go fast, making sure that we're, you know, bringing folks along. A lot of people, you know, felt like that they hadn't been involved in the process. And so I think that, you know, we've definitely got a steady core of people who are engaged and interested and participating at this point. We're also bringing, you know, new people in, you know, through the ongoing engagement that we've done. And I think, you know, staff can really commit to that timeline based on what we have. But, you know, ultimately, it's a council decision, it's a Planning Commission decision as to, you know, whether we're, you know, coming in on those timelines.
Sure. So how are we going to market this outreach? How are we going to let Arcata know that, hey, you know, we're dedicating $100,000 to making sure that everybody is getting their questions answered? Like, how are, how are we going to, you know, except for the 10 people that are watching tonight? Are we going to say, you know, "Hey, we're doing all this, please come participate"? I mean, I'd like to kind of know how that's going to work to make sure that we do get, you know, a big representation.
Yeah. You know, I think that we have evidence that there are 10 people watching tonight, but I know that the audience is much, much larger. But, you know, we do have, you know, several arrows in our quiver of, you know, marketing and outreach and engagement, and many of them have been, you know, successful. I think, to be honest, at this point, a lot of people are, you know, they've got engagement burnout, you know, by this time. You know, they've been involved and very active and engaged, and many of those people who are very passionate about this, we're not hearing from again. But I think that these meetings are really going to bring people out again. They're going to feel like meaningful next steps where, you know, critical input is going to be garnered. We're also, you know, working with, you know, our IT department and our communications department to, you know, to get messaging out. And we're looking at additional ways to, you know, make sure that our results on, you know, search engines are, you know, high enough. So I think we have, you know, a pretty good strategy for, you know, for outreach and engagement at this point, and also always open to improvement and suggestions. So if you have ideas, let us know.
No, I really appreciate that. And like I said, I'm fine with this. Again, I would like a midpoint review, and I would like an end date. I'll move on.
Yeah, I'll just add, too, that I think that this will be, like you said, David, just kind of a different type of meeting that would reinvigorate people. And just looking at the scope of work, there's a lot more deliverables, you know, with it than the outreach that we've had before. We're looking at, you know, enhanced graphics for the code. We're looking at a series of three meetings on specific dedicated subjects that people are interested in, you know, testing opportunity sites, going out and actually looking at what's there. And so I think that, you know, a lot of these deliverables in here are what people have been asking for, and we'll kind of reinvigorate that and, you know, kind of get us the best code possible. And, you know, I know a lot of people, and myself, and I know my other council colleagues included, got a lot out of those, you know, Zoom sessions with Ben Noble about form-based code and just continuing that education. And I think this will do that, to see, you know, how a form-based code can work in that part of Arcata. And then, you know, it's in people's minds to see how it can work larger throughout the county and other, you know, opportunity spots all over the county to have that kind of building code. And so, yeah, we said we'd get the Planning Commission the tools that they need. I know, yeah, we've been feeling the, you know, we've already pushed this off one meeting. We were supposed to see this like a month ago and didn't have a quorum on gateway stuff and weren't able to do it. And so, you know, really making that push to, you know, be able to start doing something and have it, you know, happen in a timely fashion. And, you know, I think the Planning Commission, you know, knows that's expected of them somewhat, too. However, you know, we are going to be bringing in one and two, you know, new more, new planning commissioners. Plug to anybody watching, apply for the Planning Commission if you're interested in local planning and want to get involved in the process. But, you know, that, some people will have to play catch-up, but like, this is the best way to play catch-up. Like, this is not only robust engagement for the community, but also for new planning commissioners, you know, getting involved in the process and learning about the plan. So that's just my two cents on it. And so I don't really have any questions, I guess. But Kimberly, do you have any, or Councilmember White, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask on this specific one?
Well, I'm wondering if this might be fleshed out just a little bit more. It feels like this is somewhat what the Planning Commission was asking. I guess I'm a little bit confused because it is not exactly what I thought we were going to be doing. And to the point of what Meredith said, I think that, well, I don't feel like we have burnout, per se, I just think we need to engage more people. And so I'm excited about that, to bring in new voices, not the same. Although I do want to hear from those who have been loyal and keep coming, but I think it's time for us to start extending our outreach to those that we haven't heard from. Because as much as we say, everybody knows about it, everybody doesn't know about it. So I'm real excited about that. I'm happy that this money is going to be allocated. I am, I guess, how many are we doing as far as these workshops? It looks like there's three?
Yeah, there, excuse me, there are four total workshops involved in the existing scope of work that was part of Attachment B2. And so these would be three additional. And I would draw your attention to Attachment C, which starts on packet page 302, which was the proposal that the Planning Commission saw in October. And this was the scope of work, the approximate $100,000 scope of work that included, you know, what I was referring to at that time as, you know, the platinum model or that sort of thing. This is a, you know, large scope of work, and we just didn't have the budget for it. Parts of this scope of work were incorporated in the existing Attachment B2, the parts that we felt like were necessary and that we had the funds to pay for. And so the remainder, the balance of this, and then some, was included in the new scope of work. And so this is, I think what we had tried to represent, you know, to the Planning Commission as a whole, as the kinds of things that would come out of this new scope. So I'd be interested and hope that I could address any comments or questions that you have about how this proposed contract amendment is maybe different from what the Planning Commission, you know, had authorized. Because it was certainly our intent to bring forward a reflection of the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
So it sounds to me that the whole idea of doing any kind of survey questionnaire was like finalized as a not happening. That's correct?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite...
Sorry. There will be no survey questionnaire. That's correct?
Survey questionnaire.
We had talked about, go ahead.
Yeah, I think we're intending to have some, yeah, surveys, survey work associated with, you know, the engagement. We haven't quite resolved on how we can, what we've been trying to do with all of these engagements is to try and make them sort of ongoing or enduring engagements, to provide some tools that community members, if they missed the in-person or the live engagement, can go and watch it on YouTube and then, you know, take survey questionnaires afterwards. So I don't have all the details fleshed out on like what specifically, you know, would have a survey questionnaire. But yeah, there's definitely some of that in how we get responses from the community to reflect on what we would incorporate into the code.
And then Ben will assist the staff with the outreach process and what that's going to look like, correct?
Yeah.
I'm super excited.
Yeah, I will say I like surveys, but I also like surveys after education. So I'm glad that there's, you know, they're tied together, just like, you know, blind surveys without, you know, having some presentations and some concrete plans before that. I have one more question, and that is, all right, so the Planning Commission asked for this, this is the $18,000 chunk of our reserves. Do you anticipate other things that they might ask for that will prolong this and require more money out of our reserves?
Yeah, the Planning Commission went through an exercise where they identified, and the community as well, identified concerns. Planning Commission went through those concerns and identified potential solutions to those concerns, looked at the resources that were available at the time or that will be developed through the EIR process, and established a set of, you know, asks for each of those different concern areas. So that's a lot of the work that they were doing over the last couple of months. This was the first item that came out of that work, and it was agreed to by, you know, by consensus on the first day that we did this, you know, sort of mind-mapping work of identifying concerns and solutions. There have been several, you know, other solutions that have been identified. Some of them are, you know, pretty simple. The Planning Commission has asked for, instance, the Fire Department, the Chief of Police to come and speak to them. They've asked for Cal Poly. And so we've made those requests out, and we're getting those scheduled so that the Planning Commission can hear directly from those other agencies or, you know, service providers. Those won't cost any additional, you know, funds. There may be other items that come forward that are, you know, asks for either, you know, new studies or, you know, something that will require additional, you know, staffing, additional capacity. And all of those would come with a request of the council to, you know, either add scope to our existing contract with the planning team and/or go out for, you know, a new contract with, you know, go out for bids for a new contract to do that work. We simply don't have any more staff capacity to do additional beyond what we're already programmed with this work and the work that we're currently doing to bring the general plan forward. So it is possible that we'll come back and say the Planning Commission asked for some new scope.
And I appreciate that. I would ask maybe to wait for more until after mid-year budget review to see, like, what we can actually do.
And then to the timing, I mean, I certainly think that, you know, more review, more conversations with, you know, other entities, all of these things are, you know, they are going to take more time. If the City Council wants to see a recommendation on the Gateway Plan, you know, in July, you know, by July, whatever, then, you know, we would need to, you know, wrap that work up. There's still a timeframe that's associated with the approval as we're going through the environmental review process. And that timeframe can be, you know, used concurrently to do any additional, you know, work and research. But if we wait to make recommendations, if we wait until, you know, we've done, you know, every, you know, study or, you know, you know, identified every concern and resolved it, that will result in slipping past that July timeframe, absolutely.
Sure. So if we approve this tonight, when does this start? When are we starting engagements?
We've got a contract, I mean, this is basically, this is the contract here. I'm going to take this, get a signature page on it and have Karen sign it right after the meeting. No, I'm joking. We will start this work immediately. We've got the first of these, I think, scheduled for late January, early February. And they're going to happen in rapid succession. There's some work that we're doing with the Commission actually as studies, or special meetings where the Commission will be involved in that process. And then we've got some that are more public-facing. So quite a number of meetings to try and squeeze into between January 1 and mid-May-ish is where we're looking.
I must have missed it. I probably went through too fast. But did you say there was a timeline with dates and things and when this was going to be happening?
No, we don't have a timeline in here. We've been, again, responsive to the desire to get this work completed efficiently and quickly. Internally at the staff level, we've been working out a timeline to see, you know, well, what would this look like? We anticipated if we came to you and said, "We want $118,000 to do additional form-based code," that you would say to us, "How long is that going to take? We want to know." So we really mapped it out. We worked with our consultants to see, you know, our... We worked with our consultants to see, you know, are these realistic timeframes? We've talked in general with the Planning Commission that if this is authorized, that they would need to schedule in, you know, some weekend work and that sort of thing. And so, everybody's kind of primed to do that. I can certainly, if, you know, if you authorize this, I can certainly, you know, one of our follow-up steps will be to release that timeline so that people can start seeing this is when to anticipate these meetings.
I think that would really help the community and the public.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, if there's no more questions or comments from the council right now, we will take it out to public comment. We will start with in-person comment first, and if you're online, feel free to get in virtual line and raise that Zoom hand.
I'm Fred Wise. I have a lot here, so I'm going to go quickly. I ask if you have questions of me to contact me another time. First, I want to make sure that everyone knows I'm very much in favor of more funding. I've spoken about this to the council and to the Planning Commission and David about this. But I ask that the council postpone the vote on this for another two weeks for precisely the reasons that some people have already brought up. Councilmember Matthews, I commend you. What you said was very well said, exactly. It is unclear from this how much money is being spent on meetings and public engagement and how much is spent on the actual code. Particularly, in earlier draft pages 302 to 306, it has $55,000 spent for graphics for the presentations, that's not for the code. And then David said that that's the Platinum version, right, using that. But what are we getting? And where is the balance? It's not clear at all. I consider it to be very sloppy. Councilmember White, you were present at the meeting where this took place. I propose that no one knew what they were voting on. There was a motion, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you actually said, "Is this for one meeting or two meetings?" Commissioner Dan Tagney also did not know what this was for. The, Ben Noble spoke, he spoke about one or two meetings. It was, it was very unclear, okay? There are 17 pages of listings of previous iterations and costs, a lot of information is repeated. Again, it's not clear. The urban field studies in one place is $55,000, in one place it's $46,000. It's just not clear what's going on here. I think in an hour or two, David can make a spreadsheet that shows what is going on, what parts are for meetings, what parts are for the final code. I put an article on Arcata One after that meeting. Jennifer Dart, I appreciated she contacted me because she knew I was wrong, and I took it down. I went to have this meeting so we could get some of this worked out. But then I looked at what I'd written, and I realized why it was wrong. It's because it's unclear. The 17 pages of stuff of previous iterations, I think should either be removed or summarized. It's just more information. I suggest that if you want, watch a video when this is approved, and I think you'll find that it's confusing, too. I also want to say that in my belief, and this is an opinion, not a fact, there is no way in the world that this will be accomplished by July. I think the Planning Commission has got 18 months of work on their plate now. We're talking about two years of work to get this done. I wish that were not the case. I think it can be changed, it can be improved, but that's the way it looks to me now. And again, I welcome your questions. Two things real quickly. The original plan had $600,000, this is $700,000. I'd like to know when that was increased. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fred.
I might only have a master's degree and taught design at the University of California in Santa Barbara, but this has been a really dysfunctional process. And I'll give you an example. The first thing is what we're seeing right now on today's paper from the Fire Department. They're really upset about what's going on, and it has all, everything to do with building heights. So, I would have recommended like a year ago that that would have been the very first thing, that the question that would have been asked, would have gone to those folks and asked what the parameters of this project were, because you burned up a lot of time arguing about what the heights of the buildings are and didn't get down to the fundamentals in the beginning and get that answered. So, I got a prediction for you. This is going to be a big mess from that standpoint. It's going to go all the way to Sacramento. They've already gone to their representatives, and it's going to Sacramento. So, big failure right off the bat in that area. The second area that we're, there's been a total failure is the Coastal Commission. 30% of this project is in the coastal zone. You would have thought you just walked down the street to your local coastal office and got the parameters of what was going to happen there. So, there's going to be a lot of problems in that aspect, too. And I'll, I'll give you a little clue from the past with this broken trust from the Snyder Building, and there was lots of information there from quotes from the management here in town from that standpoint about visuals that that particular house, which is only a huge mansion, but it's only technically one story. So, you're predicting to put, you know, you voted on five, six, seven, eight, all through that, you're going to get nailed by the Coastal Commission on that right off the bat. The other issue in the Coastal Commission you're going to get nailed is on sea level rise, that you have so much data, and I've supplied you guys, I figured by now that you would like connect the dots, but you're going to get nailed in that area. If you call any expert up between the Coastal Commission, and they're going to testify that this is crazy, that you're going to be building there. So, right off, those two issues right there should have been answered right away. Here we are a year later, and we're, we have nothing, you know? It's going to, there's going to be a battle going on with that. The third thing is you've been calling this affordable housing the whole time, and in the last, I think it was last two weeks, I've been out of town, but didn't see this one, but Ollie had Danco over there and basically said, I've got this quote from somebody else, but anything that's above like six stories on is going to increase the cost of the building so much that it can never be affordable housing. And this also links to the New York Times, which has extensively have reported on this, that there's not such thing as affordable housing in California unless the government subsidizes it. So, at this moment, you guys have to make up your mind.
My name's Joanna Gary. I live in the Gateway District currently. For a long time now, I've been blocked from seeing anything that the community has posted on social media, so I've resorted to just talking to people. But I have a degree in environmental planning and management from UC Davis from a long time ago, and never really applied it in my career, but I have long felt that how, if somebody was to write a story in the history of this Gateway Plan, it would be a very interesting story of how it's all proceeding, and how it began, and how it stopped, and how it, how it will end. I don't know, but I hope this is a really important lesson for the city about how we do things. I really want our community to be really involved, not just resorting to electing people to sit on the dais or having people work in our City Hall, but really being a civically engaged community in our thing. And I have approached young people, particularly from the high schools and the colleges, who grew up here, and I said, "Do you know what's going on? And I want you to get involved, because what decisions are made now are really going to impact them." And I just don't know how this is going to proceed, so I'm going to let some of the others who speak up, but the story will be written, and I don't think it'll be pretty about this whole process. That's all I can say. It's really kind of sad.
All right. Do we have any comments online? It looks like we have one speaker, oh, two, but first will be James. Go ahead, James.
Hello again to Planning Commission, sorry about that. You do have a planning commissioner, but hello again to the council and then also to the staff. A couple of things related to this. I believe the original discussion for funds from the council was actually for additional funds to supply to experts, possibly outside the staff, for transparency and stuff that might be outside their scope of what they could answer. In the end, when the, what the Planning Commission found of concerns, staff ended up assigning himself to all those functions, and so that, I think, kind of went on the back burner. And, you know, and then that's all water under the bridge, but I did also think that it might be worth at least getting some accounting on the funds. But I do also want to support Meredith's comment about, you know, moving forward with actual, the form-based codes, and more importantly, I think the education should come there, because a lot of people haven't gotten up to speed on this. But moving forward, I believe that they should be malleable, and so at some point they can come back to planning, because I think planning is working best what they can with what they have, and have been supplied limited information and doing their best to surmise what needs to do to move forward. And in addition, sorry, I heard a little beep and got off my thing there. Yeah, so they should be malleable. And then when it comes back to Planning Commission, it'll allow them a moment within a public forum to just decipher this before it's concretized within the draft plan. And that's basically what I have to say, and thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, our next speaker is Sheri. Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, good evening, City Council. Doesn't a form-based code assume buildings over four stories will be in our zoning code? I believe it's premature to spend this money before Arcata Fire District has a chance to present their concerns to the Planning Commission, and I don't recall the Planning Commission have, having given a definitive recommendation on building height yet. I suggest the City Council wait on a vote on this item until after that occurs. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Sheri. Our next speaker is Patricia. Go ahead. This will be our last speaker, Patricia.
Yes, I actually, Sheri, I just want to say Sheri said most of what I wanted to say very eloquently. I don't think that we should be continuing on with the, you know, with form-based codes or developing form-based codes until we figure out with the Fire District, sit down with them and figure out what the costs are going to be to the city to, to build anything over four stories. They're recommending 40 feet as the height maximum for what they can, you know, what is in their capability. So, December 13th Planning Commission meeting was supposed to have the Fire District come and talk to them, give a presentation. It was forgotten to be put on to the agenda was the excuse I heard. That was, that was really disappointing. Eric Loudon Sluger and Randy Mendoza, who is the Board President of the Fire District, gave that presentation at the Fire District Board Meeting. On December 13th, I highly suggest that you watch that presentation. I believe Fred said that it is on his Arcata One website. It was very informative of exactly what their concerns were due to mainly staffing, but also equipment and funding. But staffing is huge on that, and it also is their concerns with Cal Poly of seven-story buildings. So, I don't think this discussion of feeding more money into form-based codes, I mean, I welcome more community engagement, definitely, of course, but I don't think the discussion of feeding more money into the, into form-based codes is really, should be there until we actually sit down with the Fire District and really come up with those true numbers to address those concerns, because, you know, it is a safety hazard and to all involved, our, you know, firefighters and also the community. And I'm not sure where the liability falls, but it's a big concern. So, anyhow, that's my take on it. I think you should really stop and figure out where this money is going to and talk to that Fire District first. Thanks.
Thank you, Patricia. Okay, do we have any more public comment online?
No more public comment.
Okay. We'll bring it back to the council for questions, comments, concerns.
I just want to clarify something that you said, Mr. Loyah, that the Planning Commission has requested to speak to the Fire Department and other people, and that we can do both things concurrently.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. And the form-based codes aren't dependent on building heights, right? We can talk about form-based codes without, you know, having, maybe clarify that for me a little bit more.
Yeah, sure. So, the Planning Commission has gone through this exercise to identify the concerns based on first establishing that their recommendation, their current working recommendation is that they drop each district by one story. And so, it would be instead of eight, seven, six, five, four, we're talking now, you know, seven, six, eight, seven, six, five, it's now seven, six, five, four. And so, you know, the purpose for doing that is that, you know, your concerns are dramatically different. If the Planning Commission as a body said, "Look, we're going to make a recommendation that, you know, five stories be the max in any district," that raises a different set of concerns than if you're talking about, you know, seven or eight-story buildings. And so, with that in mind, with that current mindset that their recommendation is, you know, seven, six, five, four, they've developed this set of recommendations, and they would be, you know, proceeding with the form-based code engagement based on those building elevations. Certainly, you want to have an understanding of, you know, what the upper floor step backs would be, you know, for larger buildings and have, you know, you know, graphics to define what those would look like. If ultimately, the City Council or the Planning Commission, you know, I mean, it's ultimately, it's the City Council's decision. So, if the City Council says, "Look, we're not interested in seven-story buildings even. We want to, you know, drop those down a little bit," there would certainly be some work that we'd need to do to revise the form-based code, but, you know, the vast majority of the work that we would do in these form-based code workshops really apply to any size building. It's, you know, about the way that the facades look, the, you know, architectural detail, the, you know, you know, if we're going to have a seven-story building, you know, the current plan kind of accommodates step backs, setbacks on the ground floor, so you would set the building back from the frontage, and then step backs on the upper floors to try and, you know, mitigate, you know, the massing concerns, the shading concerns and those kinds of things. Those codes that we would establish this process of, you know, what a step back should look like and what the setback should look like would also apply to a six-story building or a five-story building. And so, there is a lot that we can, you know, garner from that. If we had absolute clarity at this time, what, you know, the building heights were going to be, if the City Council, for instance, said, "Hey, look, these are the building heights that we want you to, you know, to start planning around," then, you know, that would simplify that issue, certainly. Right now, we're operating in an environment where there's ambiguity, and we have to move forward to resolve that ambiguity. Saying that there's ambiguity in this area or that area, and we shouldn't move forward without doing this, you're going to always find an area of ambiguity. And so, we've been attempting to do, the Planning Commission's work has been attempting to, you know, work on small pieces where they can find the ability to move forward and make recommendations. Once they got through that work that I described earlier, they started working on ranking the community benefits. And so, now they're, they're working through that process, and they've got one more meeting probably on that. You know, again, there were people who were suggesting that we shouldn't be working on anything until we resolve the community benefits, we're not moving forward. All of this has to move forward simultaneously. We have to, you know, continue to, you know, have the discussion, create actual work product, look at it and say, you know, reflect back, does this make sense to us, or do we need to modify it? And so, that's the process that we've outlined with our consultants. If the council wants us to, you know, stop and, you know, maybe take some of these recommendations to, you know, prioritize what the, you know, Fire Department is going to say, and then let that be the, you know, sort of the decision that leads all other decisions, we can certainly do that. I think the information that you're going to hear from the Fire Department, you know, the, the community is telling you what they've, you know, said in their meetings. We've heard it in, you know, the meetings that we've had with them offline, and I fully anticipate that they're going to, you know, bring those same concerns. Part of the city's work is through the environmental review process, through, you know, the process that we're developing here, and even through potentially the community benefits process to address those concerns as best we can. So, that's the process we're involved in. It's going to, the, even when we adopt these plans, there's, there's going to be some ambiguity. We're not going to know, you know, when buildings are going to be built or, you know, the development patterns that'll... when buildings are going to be built or, you know, the development patterns that will come as a result of that. What we're resolving for ourselves and for the community through this process now is, you know, a vision for the future and how that, once it gets framed out, you know, we'll look and feel, we'll have a good sense for the kinds of, you know, benefits that these projects will bring forward to us. But there's, you know, you know, we can't resolve all ambiguity all at once. We have to continue to work through that process.
All right, well, I'm going to move to approves of a $118,000 contract amendment for additional form-based code scope of services. I would also like to add midpoint review, maybe either April or May. And I would find that action to amend. The existing contract is not a principal pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
So I have a question before we move forward. I don't know the protocol.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table. We can even second it now if we want to, or we can go to more questions and comments.
Could I do an alternate motion or?
Yeah, we can do that too.
Okay, so, yeah, okay. As much as I would like to...
I'm just going to add too, though, we do, this is a budgetary thing, so we do need three affirmative votes from us three, so.
So as much as I would like to approve that money because I'm super excited about the community outreach component, I am starting to veer towards that. Maybe we should, I feel like the Arcata Fire District might inform and change the trajectory of how that money is allocated. So my question is, if we approve it, can we still change how and how that money is used? Or is that already, is that set in stone? Because there's, we've already written up and allocated it line by line of what it's going to be used. And also just was wondering, you know, it seems to me that the form-based code is going to, and community benefits will be included in that form-based code. And if we start here from Arcata Fire Department, and I know you folks have already heard from them offline, and I've had an opportunity also to follow that, but I don't know that the community has. And so for transparency, I feel like that should happen. And then we would be able to better allocate the monies and what direction that would be because it's going to make a difference in whether we're doing four or eight or somewhere in between. That was an emotion, though.
Yeah, but as, I mean, I feel like we get a lot of feedback, "Oh, you're putting the cart before the horse," but like, we haven't even built the cart yet. Like, there's no cart to put before the horse because we haven't, you know, delivered anything really yet. And so I think if we're looking at deliverables of what, you know, the public wants to see in simultaneous, you know, motion forward with these questions that are being asked, there's always a new question. And, you know, sometimes people don't like the answer. Sometimes people are satisfied with the answer that they get to the question or maybe they find out more information and move on to a different question. You know, there's always going to be, you know, these questions. But I think moving, you know, forward in the process is going to be the most beneficial to the city and to, you know, answering these people's questions, you know, moving forward in motion. And so, yeah, I just, I'm ready to move forward with allocating these funds, but.
Could I ask one more question? So if we allocate the funds, which I am absolutely for, can we change it up in how it's spent? So if we find out after we've talked?
That's why, I think that's why I wanted to have a midpoint review, so we can reassess.
Okay, even before the midpoint review, I mean, if I'm not mistaken, they're coming before the Planning Commission? Is it January 9th? Is that the right date? I don't have a calendar.
It'll be January 13th. You know, again, it's, you know, maybe I'll talk to the Fire Department about coming before the City Council because this is a decision that, you know, if you're, if you're going to say that, you know, we're going to allow the Fire Department to, you know, to lead this process, that, you know, prioritize that, you probably should hear from them or at least tune into the 13th. So I would say that, you know, yes, we can amend this, you know, as we go forward. A midpoint review is probably going to be more in, you know, February, late February, early March, you know, when we've gotten through a couple of these sessions and, you know, can start reporting back.
And that will only be like a couple of meetings. I mean, it's not, there's plenty, there's room in there to amend. But yeah, we got to move forward.
How would we get direction to get Arcata Fire District to come before the council?
Let's get the Fire District before the council.
Yeah, I think, yeah. Hi, Mayor. Let's get it before the council. We'll talk about it offline, online. Yeah, but I think, and a lot of us have expressed an interest in that. I know there was, you know, some discussion of individuals setting up meetings and things like that going on. Because I kind of get the bead that, like, I see in the news all of this, you know, really sensational lies, negative stuff, but then people that I talk to offline, I was like, "Oh, no, we're not that, you know, the concerns are different." And so I want to have it happen, you know, in a room where we can all hear it. I think that would be beneficial, yeah. But I also think that doesn't prevent us moving forward with this scope of work that is in our agenda tonight.
Yeah, and I think the, you know, the scope of work that you have here is going to produce, you know, the way that I took the midpoint review earlier was, are we getting the traction out of the engagement piece that we feel like we need to? Or should we shift some of that into work product? And so I think that'll be our, you know, our primary goal. But we can also take a look at, you know, and have the consultants explain how a transition from a recommendation from, you know, seven stories to a lower number or, you know, or revising those numbers upwards, how those could be applied, you know, across the district. I guess the simplest way to think about it is that, you know, if we're designing into the form-based code for one district that has seven, one district that has six, one district that has five and one district that has four, if you decide to eliminate seven-story buildings, you've already got six built into it. And so it's kind of, it's nested that way and you would be able to, you know, apply those standards, you know, in the newly downsized districts, I guess.
And I mean, even, and now just thinking about it, like a developer who say they want to build a five-story building where we allow seven-story buildings, I mean, they can still refer to that in the code and say, "Ah, yes, here's what a good five-story building looks like" and the gambit of, you know, what that looks like, right? I mean, it doesn't necessarily, again, just because we, in a code, say that maybe someday we want to build seven-story buildings doesn't mean that overnight or even within five years or 10 years that we're going to see eight, seven-story buildings in the Beryl District. That's, you know, that's not what that means.
Yeah, and I think just to, you know, take that one step further, the form-based code would likely not, you know, ultimately resolve in, or result in allowing eight, five, eight-story buildings. You know, there are, even within the districts, you know, where, you know, six stories might be allowed, there are only a few parcels within those districts that are actually large enough to accommodate a six-story building and still have all the design specifications, the setbacks and whatnot that are undoubtedly, I mean, I, you know, I don't have the code, so I can't tell you what they are, but these are the concepts that we've been talking about. And so it, once those are applied, once those frames are applied, you're going to drastically reduce the number of parcels where that size building can be built anyway. And we'll be able to communicate that a little bit more effectively through this, you know, this engagement to share with the community, you know, what the potential outcomes might look like. That massing study, for example. There is a YouTube that we produced already that looks at the form-based code where I kind of show this graphically, where if you reduce the size of, you know, these upper floor setbacks, I'm looking at, you know, specific parcels in a particular area around the old St. Bennys, it quickly eliminates the majority of the properties there from the potential to build those buildings on those sites. So essentially, even though in that district, I believe it's, five stories are allowed, none of those parcels in that entire area would accommodate a five-story building. So I think the form-based code work that we'll do is going to, you know, quickly filter down to, you know, there's much less mass and density than, you know, than people are concerned about when they first think about, "Oh, my gosh, eight-story buildings or five-story or seven or whatever the building height is."
Yeah, and I think being able to, you know, have a draft of a form-based code that people can look at will, you know, assuage these concerns that a lot of people do have. Because you need to be able to see it, to understand what is going to possibly be built, what it could look like, how it interacts with the streetscape and with the environment and whatever that might be and what's existing there already. And you need to, you know, a lot of people at least have expressed to me, "I need to see it." I don't, you know, I don't know what it is yet. How can I say that I think it's, you know, a good idea or whatever if I can't see what it's going to look like? And so I think really, to go back to the cart and the horse metaphor, maybe the form-based code is the horse to take us there. I don't know. Okay, we had a motion on the table. Do we have any more questions or comments or discussion or?
No, thank you for the clarification.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Matthews, if you'd maybe like to repeat that motion because Bridget is looking, or no, we got that, okay. We have not gotten a second yet.
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion from Vice Mayor Matthews and we have a second from Councilmember White. We shall vote. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's three affirmative votes and thank you for that. So can we take a quick five-minute break while we bring back in our other council members? And then we'll move on to our later oral communications. Okay. Yeah, okay. Looks like we're back online here. Item 12 on our agenda tonight is oral and written communications. The city appreciates public input. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters that are not on the agenda. Please note that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take actions on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be sent by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council may be limited to three minutes with a maximum of five minutes. We're doing three minutes. And a limit on the length of oral communications may be imposed, but we don't have a lot of people here tonight, so. If you are in person and want to give comment, please line up at the podium. We'll do in-person comment first. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom webinar, press star nine if you're on the phone, and would like to make comment. Okay, we will begin. So Joanne, please start us off. Thank you.
Thank you again for letting me speak here. My name's Joanne McGary. And I have been thinking a lot today and yesterday about my community and what has happened in the recent days when we got all shook up, literally. And I actually stopped by City Hall a couple of times yesterday. I continue to be concerned about our emergency response or lack thereof and also just the concept of operating in emergency mode, whether it's an acute incident such as an earthquake or sort of a more chronic, ongoing situation like climate change. I think our community can demonstrate leadership and boldness and be in the forefront by responding to emergencies in ways that are creative, innovative and effective. So I guess, you know, I sometimes speak in very kind of broad step-back thing, but I am inspired by people like Julia Butterfly Hill, who just celebrated this month 25 years of when she climbed up into the Redwood Tree Luna and lived there for over two years. And there's people like that and like the astronauts up in space who really do have perspectives about the overview and looking at the big picture. Not that we have to operate in big ways. We have to operate in ways that the big picture makes us realize. And I'm just hoping that we really recognize how important it is to operate in an emergency mode and do things quicker than we're doing them. I don't want another person to die on the streets, especially in front of City Hall. I don't want to see a businessman stabbed again. And I want people who have issues that result in their sleeping, where people don't want them to sleep, to have a place where they can be. And I just want us to take some action and make some sacrifices. We don't need to have parties all the time. We need to do some serious work and then we can celebrate. So I hope the 2023 year will be one of working hard to get things done and then we can celebrate. to get things done and then we can celebrate what we've accomplished. And if it's operating in emergency mode quickly and urgently, let's do it. And let's get the community to do it together. Don't just have them rely on you guys or just little old me. There's a lot of people out there who want to get involved and will get involved if you ask them. And there's things that we can do. So I guess I'm just sort of leaving it at that and I just hope everybody has a happy holiday. Thanks.
Thank you, Joanne. Okay, next commenter.
Honorable Mayor, may I have a little leeway with the time? Is that possible?
I'll restart it at three minutes once you start talking.
Okay. First, there's a good article, excellent article, Metre of Reunion, came out today by Jack Durham about the Cal Poly situation with the fire district. There's a link on arcataone.com/council. If you want to come, it's January 10th. I'm sure you can come and sit at the back and not say anything to watch the presentation there. I have a handout at the end. David, you mentioned not too many tall-story buildings or St. Vinnie's. Parcels can be purchased and combined. That's what developers do. They make them larger. You remember in June, I said that David Loia was gaslighting the city council. Well, it turned out that gaslighting has become the word of the year. So I was in advance on that a little bit. Next, this is very serious stuff. I'm going to use the quote, "You never go so far as when you don't know where you're going." You've heard me say this before. I find the lack of management impossible to get any kind of results. There is no sense of dependency or critical path thinking. We talked about the fire district weighing in on the building height. That's early. The fire district has been in touch with our state senator and assemblyman. They were, quote, "dumbfounded" that this had not been addressed earlier, previously. This is dealing with the Cal Poly situation. Same thing applies here. When I started getting involved in this, studying it full-time really, February, March, April last year, I was studying the process. It occurred to me that if I continued, it would result in David Loia losing, being removed from managing this plan. There's just too many things that have gone wrong. It originally had a one-year process, if you remember. That's what's here. It was supposed to be done by December. It's not going to be done. David is skilled in many ways, but not in management of a large project, in my opinion. And the results are here. I have a list of items I can say. I think you know most of them. The updated gateway plan is October 1st. We're supposed to see a table of things. It only contains things that, quote-unquote, "comport to the plan." Nothing else. We're supposed to see a table of things. The L Street is continually on the table. The Transportation Safety Committee has made their decision, voted three times on that, but we kind of refused to listen to them. What else can I say? You know, this is how I feel. I think, in essence, this year, in the next few months, you're going to be discussing removing David Loia from management of this plan. So we can continue.
Thank you, Fred. And we'll distribute the handouts if you have them.
General plan. This is the element out of the general plan is the noise element. And this is something that a year ago, I first started with the police department and then they said to go to the city. And it went all the way up to the city council where you all got a letter specifying that we're not in compliance with the noise element. And I spelled it out. And unfortunately, your excuse is that we just don't have the money to enforce the law, which is nonsense. I mean, you can see what's happening tonight. You're approving quite a bit of money for the gateway. So one of my environmental impact questions for the gateway was that you weren't in compliance. And this is spelled out from Plan West has to do testing it. And I actually spelled out, you're not going to do this little two-hour test where you're going to go around town and then tell us. You know, I specified the information to you guys that there's government system for doing a long-term test to see what the seasonal changes are and all these busy intersections that are going to be part of the gateway project, too. So it's a perfect time to find out all those answers. Unfortunately, when I go to Plan West or I've talked to anybody in the city, they just don't seem to know what's happening with that. It should have been started about a year ago. I'm not aware that it's even been started. So for a year now, you haven't been in compliance with the noise element. And there's specific standards in the city code. There's standards in the county. There's standards for the state. So you don't get a pass just because you want to pick and choose what laws that you want to enforce in the city. So I don't know what to say about this anymore. It's just, I want to see some action. I mean, this is part of what I wrote to you on SB 1000, Social Justice and Environmental Planning. You know, I have a pretty good idea that unfortunately, people are going to use public transportation. So there's going to be a lot of traffic going on these busy streets. And we need to have an answer of what's going on right now and also the calculations of how that's going to influence the standards of living of people that are living in North Town, the Midtown, and in the Gateway area. And this is not being done. And I'll give you a heads up on this. This was sort of why we got that Berkeley versus Berkeley case where the neighbors went after the university in this case for their project. And it was, a lot of it was about the noise. And also, the city also sued the university in that case, too, because of some of these things that are coming up with the fire and the $6.5 billion that you're going to have to come up in extra money to actually go over four stories. So please work it out.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have any comments online?
We do. We've got call-in user. Go ahead, call-in user.
Hello. I want to apologize. My name is Kent Sawatsky and I just finally was able to tune into your meeting. Is this public comment, the second public comment, point of order, I guess, on non-agendized items? Or are we talking on a specific project? I wish to have that answered if I could.
Yes, this is the open public comment period.
Thank you. So I'm commenting correctly. I do have major concerns that have just been spoken, you know, to prior speakers there that I was able to watch in here. Appreciate them taking their time to comment. I tried to speak with you folks on risk management before, and this is a very major topic out there. As some of you are aware, the city did a, not a judgment, but a plea deal for $3.9 million on a settlement. I wish you folks to really ask your staff, what does this have to do with our future costs in the city? Since this is kind of what I do. And I work with insurance companies. So as far as my math goes, probably during the last 20 or 30 years, you have exceeded the total that you spent on litigation in one year. This deeply concerns the public. What more important than that deeply concerns the public, and some of you have had communication with me, some of you haven't, and you all should get involved in this, is that the problem that cost a $3.9 million judgment, which I think in the prior year was $1.6 million worth of legal expenses, and I could be corrected on that. But when you're looking at something that's ramping up to that cost, you have a serious problem in-house. So I highly recommend that you folks start paying attention to risk management, litigation where money happens. This is what happens in all the forums I deal with. And I think you need to ask your staff, how much is this last year's worth of judgment going to cost us when it comes down to reassessment for our insurance pool? My thing has happened. You may be kicked out of the pool and/or your rates will go up. It'll be costing you enough to pay back that $3.9 million plus other costs there. So I would like to work with you. I want to minimize your cost in the future. And the biggest thing is if you had a judgment like that, why hasn't the problem been fixed that cost the problem? And I'm happy to work with Karen Deemer and your staff to make sure that this does not end up being a $39 million judgment because the next judge will say, you didn't fix the problem that cost the $3.9 million settlement. It wasn't a judgment. It was a settlement. I want to be clear on that. So anyway, that's what I do. I do a risk management. Thank you for my opportunity to speak. And I look forward to minimizing the cost to us taxpayers regarding litigation. That's what I do. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Do you have any more online public comments?
We do. Our next commenter is Sheri. Go ahead, Sheri.
I'll be brief. In honor of the late Nancy Ann Barnes, when will the city have a warming station for our unhoused neighbors? Thank you.
And there's no more online public comment.
Okay. And with that, we will move to council and staff reports. And so our first update will be from City Engineer Natricotry on the Old Arcata Road Improvement Project.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and the members of the public and staff here. The first question is why I'm here on the Old Arcata Road project? Because I promised, not promised, I said in February when we did our environmental document approval and the 30% design that when we received our 60% design, I'll be back to give an update on the project. So we received our 60% design late November and the plans are on the website. So I'm here just to give you a bit update on the project. I'll just briefly go over the project background, just for like some of the new council members so they know how we end up here. And then I'll go over the current status of the project, next steps. And at the end, if you have any questions, I'll answer those questions. So project overview. This Old Arcata Road project has been a priority project for more than a decade, I would say. In 2010, city attempted to do a project in that area. However, project was not liked by the neighbors because we did not consult with them before starting the project. So we were not able to complete the project in 2010 and we lost the funding. So in 2015, we restarted the project, but this time, we started with aggressive public engagement. The public engagement lasted for at least for eight to nine months. In that public engagement process, we had multiple public meetings, pop-up demonstration, walk audits. And based on the public engagement, we received a lot of feedbacks from the public and we came up with the project goals for the project. So some of the project goals were, or the project objectives were, to improve the Old Arcata Road project, improve the improvement safety, decrease speed, provide traffic calming, extend pedestrian connectivity, and minimize potential environmental impacts through the project. The project limits. Project starts, it's not very clear to see here, but here, this is our buttermilk and Old Arcata Road roundabout just here. So project begins just approximately 600 feet south of that roundabout. The project length is approximately a mile. It includes paving, bio soils, drainage improvements, walkway. Currently, there is no sidewalk in some portion of the Old Arcata Road. But after the project is completed, there will be a continuous sidewalk, at least on the one side, throughout the project alignment. Project also includes some lighting, crosswalk improvements. And at the intersection of the Old Arcata Road and the Jacoby Creek, there will be a new roundabout. For most part, the cross section will look like this. There will be two travel lanes, bike lanes on either side, and a walkway, continuous walkway, at least on the one side. So for now, it will be on the west side of the Old Arcata Road, there will be a walkway. And between the walkway and the bike lane, in some location, there will be a three-to-five-foot bio swell, just for drainage improvement as well as buffer between the traffic and So on the current status, as I said, in early February, we did a presentation here at the council and our environmental document got approved. And right after that, we went to CTC, California Transportation Commission, and applied and received for funding for the design for the next phase of the project. We went to Humboldt County and also to the coastal development staff to get a coastal development permit for the project. We submitted all the applicable permits needed for the project before we can start the construction. So that has been submitted. And we received 60% design drawings late November. So before I go to that one, when I presented this project at the 30% level during the meeting, there were some recommendations provided by the council and the members of the public, and that were not incorporated in the 30% design. So I'll just go over those elements. And now they are incorporated in our 60% design. So main element was parking. Parking, as you know, some of the council members know, parking was a big concern. It was brought to our attention throughout the project. The way we have addressed the parking is we are not adding additional parking along the project, but we are improving the existing parking, especially on the north portion of the Jacoby Creek school. Currently, there's no dedicated parking, but as a part of the project, we are improving parking and there will be additional parking, at least on that area of the project. Next one was, we received a lot of comments on the size of the roundabout. When we had our 30% design drawings, we had a roundabout that was inscribed circle diameter, we call it. It was 113 feet. And when we presented that project, we told the public and the councils that we will go back to the drawing board and see how we can make it smaller. So currently, the roundabout that we have proposed on the 60% design is kind of way to say it's 108 to 110 feet. The reason I'm saying that, it's not perfect circle. It's an oval. We are trying to have less impact on neighbor schools. So we are just making it oval. So the diameter is a little bit smaller on one side and one side it's longer. So I'm saying approximately 108 to 110. That's a diameter, inscribed circle diameter of the current roundabout that's proposed. In addition to that, we said we will be doing a drainage improvement. So we are not doing, but we will be showing on the 60% design. So currently, our 60% design shows all the drainage improvements along the project alignment. That includes the bio swell and a new strong drain pipe along the project alignment and also at the intersection of the Old Arcata Road and the Jacoby Creek Road. And the last but not the least was, people have requested rapid flashing crossing at certain locations. So we have shown that on the 60% design, especially at the intersection of Old Arcata Road and Anderson Lane, there is a crosswalk and there will be pedestrian actuated light crossing there. In addition to that, there will be similar crossing light at Highland, which is in front of the school. And all the three legs of the roundabout will have a similar pedestrian push-button flashlights. So with that, you know, we got our 60% design drawings. With that, we also received a cost estimate. As you know, lately, the cost has been going up. So initially, the cost estimate for the project was approximately $4 million. So now, at 60% design level, we have updated that to, based on the design, is $5 million. We do have some state and some federal funding, which is approximately $3.2, $3.3 million. And the remainder of funds will be coming from the city match, Measure G funds or the street funds. We are also still exploring, since the cost, we just received our updated cost, we're exploring other options, how we can get fund through Caltrans or if there are any other part of money where we could get additional funding for the project. If that's not feasible, there is certain sections and certain improvements we could eliminate. That may include certain improvements along the project alignment. We have not decided what that would be, but we are looking into that option. So we will remain within the original project cost of approximately $4 million. So our next steps are, we are planning to complete the design by early 2023. Right now, we are at 60% level. So end of January, we will be receiving our 90% design. And right after that, we will be taking those drawings and funding packet to CTC again in the March to get the construction allocation funding. So once we get the construction funding and the So once we get the construction funding and the design is 100% done, we will be hopefully starting the construction late summer of 2023. So that is my quick update on the project. If you have any specific questions, let me please ask. There, on our project, project specific website, there are 60% design and all the documents related to the project. So people can view that, provide comments if they have any feedback on that. This is our updated roundabout. It's not changed significantly, but this has been updated since February. One new thing that you will notice, and we are still trying to work through it, is the access on the Old Arcata Road here, this access for the school. Originally, that access was not there, but we are trying to accommodate that access in case school has to get out at least one way. It may not be feasible to do two way, but definitely people could enter through Jacoby Creek and they can exit here. So that's where, that's where we are at this point. So please feel free to ask questions.
Any council questions or comments?
I just really appreciate that update. It's nice to see the accommodations that you made. I really appreciate that. And I'm really looking forward to getting this project underway as children are still going to school on that road. So keep going. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely. And I don't want to be very, very optimistic and say that, yes, we will be starting the construction, as I said, in late summer. There is still one hiccup that we are working through Caltrans to get our federal side environmental document, which is NEPA. And they have promised that we will have that by January. So if that happens, then we'll be moving forward in right direction.
So we'll get another update at the 90% then?
Yes, definitely. If you are requesting that, yeah, I could come back and give you a perfect.
Thank you so much.
One more update, yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you. This is one of the very first projects, I think, we voted on when we came in. And I know that the vast majority of that community is going to be very grateful to see forward motion. It's been, it's been a journey. So thank you.
Thank you, Netra. Any other questions, comments? Okay.
We do have a couple of public comments.
Okay, I was gonna ask, do we take public comments on staff reports usually? Okay. We will do that. Then we will take public comment. So I guess if there's anybody in person first that would like to throw in on Old Arcata Road and then we'll move to online.
And not circles. Wish the bike lane could actually be on the other side of the bio swell. I don't know if that's a consideration at all or it's too late or if there's problems with doing that. But having bikes next to cars is always tricky and it's better to have them next to pedestrians perhaps. So, but I love the oval.
There is a simple plan that's missing from your bike lanes that I've made a number of trips down to Southern California, especially Santa Monica. And I noticed that at the very least on the bicycle lanes, they paint them like bright turquoise to distinguish, yes, this is a bike lane. You guys are still sort of like quite a few years behind with just a white line. That's kind of like a really wimpy way of identifying the bike lane. So I don't know whether the issue is just the cost of the paint, but they're not the only city. I mean, I just came from Miami, from Maripazol. And in Miami, too, it's the same thing, that bicycle lanes are pretty distinguished. Sometimes in Santa Monica's case, they also have physical barriers to keep cars away from the, from the bike lane. But in this case, it should be, you know, I've noticed this on G Street, it's all been redone. But it's very black and I don't know if it sends the right message.
Okay. And moving to the online comments, comment.
We just have one, call in user three. Go ahead.
Hello, Netra Kensawatsky here and of course, the rest of you also. I appreciate the fact that you redesigned your project when I pointed out that there was no crossing at the, I guess you'd say, the southern side of this where people could cross safely. I appreciate the fact that you actually realized that people go the shortest distance between two things and incorporated that. Unfortunately, a comment was made that there's major support for this. Yes, there is for some people, but again, risk management is something I deal with. This is supposedly supposed to solve a problem that didn't exist. And I could be corrected if wrong, but my understanding is there are only one accident in the distant past regarding the current situation there without the roundabout. And that had to do with some, I think drunk driver blowing through the stop sign. I'm sure there'll be a whole bunch of people commenting in favor of this. I always have a problem when staff doesn't reach out to certain groups such as Bayside Cares, who have had a lot of input. And I just spoke with one of their members here and they did not have a clue that this was on your agenda for the night, so they could come in. So I do see major flaws in what's here. I totally support the rest of the support of the project. My family members do have property down on Jacoby Creek. And I'm not speaking for the rest of them, but to spend the amount of money we're spending for this particular roundabout portion of your project, to me, there's all kinds of better places. And I do understand your staff gets whatever 10% to manage. The project now is 50% more than what it was before without the roundabout. But that should not be a driving concern. And my concern is the wish of the local people. A lot of it is expressed by a group that lives right there and has input, especially the school that's there. And if those people were not notified that this was on your agenda for tonight, I have serious problems with that so that you can't get input from people. So I recommend that if there's any action to be taken, that these people be notified and you table this for a future thing. I think this is just a report. I guess you're going to accept the report, which is always great. But I think you should, should also listen to the constituents, not only a few that are within your jurisdiction, but the people that are within the county. And again, risk management, this is a lawyer's dream. You're in litigation on this already. And I don't think that was mentioned to any of you where you are as far as potentially spending, you know, millions of taxpayers' dollars to defend litigation. And I highly recommend that you, that you delve in this a little bit further. And that's all I ask when I ask for risk management is that you have full knowledge and listen to all sides of things, including the attorneys that are engaged in litigation on this topic. So anyway, that's a little input from me, just trying to minimize your cost, trying to be helpful. And that's where I come from. And so now I will, I will go ahead and cease my, cease my comments. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
All right. And then call in user four is our last caller.
Yeah, can you hear me? This is Mark Delaney.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yeah, okay, Mark Delaney. I live on the corner of Old Jacoby Road and Jacoby Road and Old Arcata Road and Jacoby Road. That's the intersection that's under discussion for the roundabout. The rest of the project is in Arcata. This roundabout is not in Arcata. It's in Humboldt, it's in Humboldt County. It's outside of Arcata. It's part of Humboldt County. The people that live here don't want the roundabout. We're not represented by Arcata, as you know, because Arcata did not notify us of this meeting. This has kind of been a problem. Old Arcata Road project, you want to fix the road and everything and move the road two feet east so that you can fix all the eye-to-eye problems with the laterals that come down and improve bicycle lane and some parking issues that are not totally supported, but has to do with Jacoby Creek School and having them go down the road and go into the county and go around the roundabout and then go back to take the kids. Twice a day, there's a traffic jam there. But there's a problem here. Arcata has not involved the people that live outside of Arcata jurisdiction in the decision-making process. And we vigorously, we don't want this. We don't want a roundabout. The general plan, the California Constitution requires that consistency with the general plan be adhered to. You guys are not adhering to the three general plans that say this is to remain rural and unchanged. This is a historic district. I live in a, in a California and National Registered Landmark of Jacoby Creek, the old Jacoby Creek School. The Temperance Hall is across the street and the Grange is across the street. And this roundabout will move the highway closer to the school, which is against the law. You can't impact children by moving that highway closer to them. The noise impact alone, plus the visual impact to this community is not desirable. We don't want that. The rest of the project is in Arcata. Arcata should work on the stuff that's in Arcata. The stuff that's out of Arcata needs to go back to LAFCO and to the county for approval and involve the citizens, the 900 voters that live up Jacoby Creek Road and businesses that are going to be affected that have not been notified. We have not been part of this process. And in 2016, the part of the community that was involved voted against this. This project, the roundabout, was, was an idea of Omni Consultants to add intersection where actually we wanted to have the road improved, but just maintain the existing road bed. $4 million to put a roundabout in that goes nowhere for nobody is not necessary.
Mark, that's the end of your three minutes. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Okay. So that's the last of the public comments on that. We will move on to our next staff report. Again, this, this segment is for staff reports only. These are not agenda items that we are taking action on. These are just reports of information. So we will move next to an update from Environmental Services Director Emily Sinkhorn on the Arcata Annie and Mary Trail Connectivity Project.
Great. Well, good evening again, council members. So this was intended as a staff report to provide more context and photos and more explanation for next steps for the project. So I'll try to be quick because I touched on some in the previous agenda item. But just for some background for the Annie and Mary Trail, it has been a regional trail priority for over two decades and especially connecting Arcata to Blue Lake along the previous rail line. And it is currently a priority project on the council's fiscal year priority projects. And it's really especially directly tied to connecting the Valley West neighborhood with much more of a safe walking, biking connectivity to downtown Arcata and Cal Poly Humboldt and connecting downtown Arcata and all of Arcata neighborhoods to the Alder Grove Industrial Park and then to the Mad River at the Park One of the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District's Pump Station Park. So we have a lot of project partners involved in this project. So officially, project partners for our Active Transportation Program grant included Humboldt County Public Works and the Water District. And this project was initially scoped to be within the city limits of Arcata. So it would connect to Valley West over the Giantoli Overpass and then dead end at city limits. So in the Alder Grove Industrial Park. And from community input during the planning stages, people really asked for a family-friendly destination. And having a non-motorized access to the river was really seen as what could be this great destination on the overall regional goal to eventually connect Arcata to Blue Lake. Caltrans is a key partner. And especially as the city, through this project, is proposing improvements at four points that overlap with their right-of-way. And most notably, the Giantoli Overpass over 299, some improvements on the Sunset Avenue Overpass over 101, a bit of airspace where the highway goes over the city's West End Road near the Arcata Ridge Trail Northern entrance, as well as under the St. Louis Road Overpass. We'll take a look at some photos of those. So they are a key partner. The Great Redwood Trail Agency is the agency that is used, is now managing the rail corridor along the North Coast, the former North Coast Railroad Authority. And so they are a key, key partner as they are currently embarking on a master plan for the Great Redwood Trail. We have a consultant team led by GHD with SHN and DZC Archaeology. And then a lot of community members and organizations, in particular Friends of the Annie and Mary Trail, that have been advocating for the trail for 20 years. So here's the project area. The yellow line is the trail alignment. So especially, you know, the, the southern boundary is at the Sunset Overpass near the skate park and Larson Park and heading up north to the Giantoli Overpass and then east to Park One. And so beyond the Alder Grove Industrial Park, we are in the unincorporated county and that's why the county has been a key partner in all of this planning and environmental document and preliminary design. And so this is giving the bigger picture of like this is just not a 3.5 acre trail, but it will really enable with the completion of the county's Humboldt Bay Trail South from the south end of the city's Bay Trail, it will really provide continuous walking, biking, rolling path from Eureka through the northern city limits of Arcata and into, heading towards Blue Lake. So there's a lot of colors on this map. The component in Blue Lake, so the light blue section of trail through the city of Blue Lake is complete. The green section is between the unincorporated community of Glendale, where Murphy's is located and Blue Lake. That, the county and Caltrans are pursuing that. And then the, you know, final connection will be that pink section crossing the river to connect Arcata's project to the trail segments happening closer to Blue Lake. So I've spoken to some of this already, but we had a planning study in 2018, 2019. A lot of public outreach informed the council's decision at that time. We received an ATP grant. We have now are completing our environmental phase and then heading into design and right-of-way this next year. And we're aiming to begin construction in summer of 2024. That is the goal. So here's just some photos that hopefully come out a little bit of north to south, what the trail corridor looks like. This is along the unincorporated section of West End Road. And there is a bench that is, has been there for the rail. And since 1951, like long time that this, you know, rail corridor has been here. The ties and metal rails have all been pulled from this segment. It is really woodsy feeling. You're below the road, so there's even more separation. And then you get great views of the river. The Giantoli Lane Overpass is the, a key component of this project. And we're proposing a sidewalk and improve bike lanes over the overpass for Valley West community members to access the trail over the highway. These are just what it currently looks like to traverse that overpass. And then south of there, the trail is much more in a industrial zone. And there's lots of, there's two different rail lines that go through there, a lot more room. In the design phase, we'll be working closely with adjacent property owners and businesses as a lot of businesses are using, you know, the space for traveling or storage of materials. So that will be a key component in this next phase. Here's just some photos of where the rail corridor goes under the St. Louis Road Overpass, parallel to 101. And it is an open area that through the community engagement was seen as an option for a parklet to have more recreation opportunities in this zone right along the trail. And then the trail would connect to the existing Humboldt Bay Trail, Foster Avenue Trail, right at the skate park. This is just a photo of one of our outreach events with a demonstration paving of where the trail will be continuing north. So here are some conceptual renderings from some of the photos, kind of that you have seen and what the trail could look and feel like. And again, in the design phase this next year, we'll be engaging with more community members and adjacent property owners about exact design parameters for the, for the trail. So as I've said, we've had a lot of community outreach on this project so far and then will be more to come in this next year in the design phase. But we have, especially for notifying in our public circulation of our SEQA document, reached back out to all participants that have engaged in the past four years, as well as had thorough tribal consultation and opportunities for input and another pop-up event when it hailed in December. And we actually had some good conversations with people and adjacent property owners and at the Parks and Rec Committee in November. So as I talked about already, we have been in this environment. So as I talked about already, we have been in this environmental phase. We've completed 30% designs and our environmental document and will be heading into design next year. So the council has adopted our SEQA document. We are going to the CTC for funding in January, headed to design, looking forward to working with more community members to refine the 30% designs. And I think that is it. Thank you for the opportunity to share about the project. Look forward to more in the next year.
Wonderful. Thank you, Emily. That was I loved the images. That's a good update to see those renderings. That's very cool. I couldn't be more excited. Do we have any other questions or comments from the council? Yeah, go ahead, please.
Of course, I'm super excited because it's a great way to connect Valley West to Main Arcata in 3.5 miles. I did, and you probably said it, but I maybe missed it. Will there be a sidewalk? So like when you're in front of the mill yard and it goes all the way toward the Arcata Ridge Trail where the Lewis Avenue Bridge is because trucks are barreling through, there's barely any shoulder?
Yeah, so right now in the 30% designs and what we've received positive feedback on so far is to be a sidewalk on the Giantoli Lane Overpass, which leads to a crosswalk over West End Road. And you're kind of at a grade that's a little bit higher up there from what is down at Alder Grove Industrial Park and the rail. And so then of being a ramp to get down to the trail. And then you're on the trail on the east side of West End Road, all the way to and past the Ridge Trail, James Creek, South Fork, James Creek entrance.
And is that where you're thinking to do the little park couplet?
The park and I don't have the best zoomed in map for it, but we'll use a cursor. Oh, boy, I have to squint a lot. So he, you know, here is Giantoli Lane. And we're along, you know, like the east side of West End Road through, you know, through here. Here's the Arcata Ridge Trail coming off here right by the 101 undercrossing. And this is just a short little undercrossing. And there'll be, you know, good sight distance and and, you know, opportunities for amenities. And then the St. Louis Overpass is right here. And that's where the proposed parklet is.
Some new adventures for me and my Great Dane.
Okay, well, if we don't have any other questions or comments, thank you, Emily. And I guess we were taking public comment on these items. So is there any comment on this update? Okay, oh, speak now or forever hold your peace.
Thanks for your hard work on this. It's nice to see a long term project like this eventually come to fruition. And I know it takes takes time. I have a question, which is not specific to this project, but something that you know about. It's for all projects, really. It's has to do with proliferation of electric bicycles. We have electric bicycles now that are essentially our motorcycles that don't require pedaling. Will they be a but we use the phrase non-motorized. The phrase non-motorized is on the signs, it's everywhere. How's this going to get resolved? I'm not looking for an answer immediately. But at some point, you know, all over the United States, this is going to have to get resolved. That's that's it. Thanks.
You mentioned that bridge that was part of the project. I would like to point out the High Line in New York. I don't know if very many people are familiar with that elevated railroad track that originally they wanted to tear down, but now has turned into the most successful project in New York. So popular that they spanned a couple billion dollar project on the Hudson with all the infill projects there. So I'm just was wondering whether there's much thought going into, you know, railroad structures and incorporating that into the project because in New York's case, it could have easily been torn down. And instead, they kept it and draws like millions of people a year, tourists that want to walk on it elevated or above the city. So, you know, that's I would highly recommend we have a lot of railroads and potential other projects that someone like evaluates that and incorporates incorporates that from the creative side instead of just spend a lot of money to tear it down.
Thank you. Any online comments on this item?
There is just one. Go ahead, Colin user. Go ahead.
Yeah, this this is your Rideschool calling in. Yeah, I'd like to add comment about the electric bicycles. I think that is definitely something that needs to be addressed. You know, they're they're quiet. And sooner or later, there's going to be some wrecks that there haven't been already here locally. I recall bringing this up with Forest Management Committee and was really berated for even just having the idea of keeping electric bikes off of dirt trails or natural surface trails. So anyways, that that is something that needs to take some serious consideration. But aside from that, I mean, I when I look at some of the trailheads that I've tried to bring into attention, you know, there's Margaret Street, there's Dickel Hill, you know, even the one on West End Road is really just a mess. That, you know, the homelessness that has really proliferated around some of these trails, you know, that West End Road Ridge Trail One is is one specifically. I've taken council members out there in the past and shown them the homeless camp that just is it's just really expanded. And I think that that's, you know, while new things, new shiny things, all they're fun to look at and all that, but we really are not dealing with the serious issues that we have. And I'd like to see more staff time directed to that rather than just spending considerable amount of money, time, effort on just new things without really taking care of what we already have. And I still didn't I wasn't able to get the first part of Emily's presentation, but I brought up earlier about the that West End Road section of rail that was part of the Annie and Mary that had been abandoned before NCRA came into existence. And I don't know that that's been resolved. And if Emily addressed that in her earlier part of this presentation. But those are my comments for now. And yeah, I'll be I'll be taking a hard look at this. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you. Is that it?
One more.
One more. All right, let's hear it.
You gotta have the hands go up maybe at the beginning. Go ahead, Colin user.
Hello, Kent Swaskin. I always like people to be educated on the facts. And of course, you can ask Emily to see whether these facts. But number one is according to this determination that I'm aware of from the Surface Transportation Board, the Annie and Mary Railroad was abandoned. And it can't be rail banked. It's not it can't be part of a trail system. So now you have to go to the landowners and hopefully you'll find willing landowners who are willing to to for a fee or for the goodness of their heart grant either rights across their properties. Unless, of course, the the, oh, Great Redwood Trail people actually have inherited fee title property. Now, personally, I'm I'm sitting within a few fees of the Annie and Mary Trailhead and the sign's right out there by my building in Blue Lake. And it goes down and it goes through Blue Lake on what I understand is fee titled. But the the resource then ends in its easements. And those easements are no longer in existence. So the trail, unless it's put beside Caltrans or some other thing, or willing landowners such as myself and my neighbors who probably own, I don't know, seven eighths or a mile worth of potential what used to be the railroad through our property wished to greed, wished to go for this, the trail in itself is is very, very difficult to be feasible. Emily can educate you. I think they tried to go ahead and even get Caltrans to allow the trail to be moved alongside of the the highway there. And I don't think they were warmly received regarding that. So I caution everybody who's involved with this quote unquote Annie and Mary Trail to to understand exactly where you're at. And even the sections that were referred to there, if they were part of the Annie and Mary Trail, the which is abandoned unless it's fee titled ground, there you're starting off with willing buyers or willing people that are willing to be bought to have an access or donate. So I think you should all understand that what that implication is regarding the potential of the Annie and Mary Trail. And it could be a really wonderful connectivity to go from Arcata. But I wish you would be informed. And if I'm wrong, Emily can totally correct me. But it has been abandoned. And so it's not able to be trail banked rail banked. And so it's not susceptible to normal development. So you're in a whole different ballgame there. And I just wish you all to be informed and know what you're dealing with. So that's that's what my agenda is here. So we can all make informed decisions. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. All right. That is it on public comment on that staff report. Okay. And now we move to other council or other staff reports, if there's anything else to add from City Manager Demer. Okay. So do council members have anything to report out? Take it away.
All right. I just want to make sure everybody was hope everybody was safe during our earthquake a couple days ago. Thank the staff for showing up like almost immediately afterwards. I think Netra was the first person here. I was just wondering, City Manager Demer, very brief report out of how it affected Arcata. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. I mean, unlike some of our southern neighbors, Arcata fared, you know, much better just being farther north from the epicenter of the earthquake. But it certainly did shake in this region. And our water, we did have approximately 12 staff that responded in between the hours of, you know, 2:30 and 6 o'clock for some of that initial response focused primarily first on water sewer infrastructure. Obviously, power went out instantaneously throughout the entire county. So we start moving generators to power up certain pump stations and certain water tanks in in our region. Our staff really did an excellent job. They know our system well. Things ran very smoothly in Arcata in terms of that response. You read Mike Clinton's retirement today. You know, we put the whole thing on him. He wanted one more late night. And he was definitely one of the first ones in to respond. And and we've agreed that he will stay on call for us a little bit if we need him in those types of emergencies because he knows how everything operates. But and then we moved out. Our building official also responded in very early and just started to look at the downtown businesses around the plaza and then heading out to some of the higher population areas, the hotels, and some of the taller, older structures. But fortunately, in Arcata, between what we were able to do initially, and then once daylight hit to start going through the other facilities, coordinating with Cal Poly, coordinating with the schools, we have not had to red tag any buildings here in Arcata. So we did sustain some damage to one of our water tanks. So we're going to look at assessing that. The county has declared a local emergency. So we will be filing all of our damage assessments as well. We did put out some social media posts today encouraging residents or businesses who had damage to to log that onto the county's website so we can get a full picture of the damage of the earthquake. Most of the damage that we know has been window damage besides just breakage of things interior to either residences or businesses. And it appears that most of the window breaks were things that fell from the inside of businesses that display cases or so forth that fell into the windows and therefore kind of breaking the window out. I did see a really nice post from Main Street this morning. One of our community ambassadors as well, Fire Phoenix, reported in very early and was helping with downtown businesses cleanup class that had issues right on on the plaza. So that was great and gave me lots of ideas of how we could potentially use the ambassador program in emergencies that we hadn't before. So but it's definitely a reminder to all of us to have our, you know, extra things to charge available, to have our go bigs ready, and to practice our drills at our own residences and businesses. So.
Thank you so much. And I, you know, to just piggyback off of that, a lot of our businesses were hit, you know, on a very important shopping day, really close to the holidays. So they lost probably a day of business. I'd just like to remind everyone to please in these last couple of days, shop local, shop the stores in Arcata, and have a happy holidays. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that this is the time for it. So any updates, yeah, from our liaisons, anything like that. Now's the perfect time.
Might be a little overzealous, but I got to attend my first committee as a liaison for the Homeless and Housing Working Group. And they did some updates on the two home key projects. I actually had an opportunity to go with Mike Wilson on Friday and Kevin Hoover and do the grand tour and watch people get moved in. It was very emotional watching people, not this last Friday, but the Friday before, Friday and Saturday and Sunday, they filled up 55 units, so about 60 people. They still have seven ADA units that they are renovating. So those will be coming soon. And yeah, people got in just as those storms were hitting and really excited. Also, the Danko Village West property will be slightly delayed. My understanding is they're hoping in a month, but they're moving on then as quickly as possible. And that will house, I believe, another 69 people, I think, for a total of 135 between the two home key projects. Depending, well, not people, units, excuse me, because some will be double occupancy and some might even have families. They also gave an update on the safe parking program and a lot of those, because they were able to be moved into the Grove, which is the formerly the Days Inn, now has opened up some opportunities. And so they'll be able to move down that waiting list and get people in. Currently, they're serving 19 vehicles. So that's encouraging. And there was a little bit of talk about a possibility, just exploring the idea of a warming facility as opposed to like a shelter possibility. And Karen Meredith, were there other things that I might have missed?
No, that was a great synopsis. I'm just really fortunate to be a part of that as well. And I look forward to working with you, Kimberly, trying to find out some solutions. Thank you.
Oh, and I heard from Joanne that there was a great success at the Neighborhood D Street Dinner for the unhoused doing some art and other therapeutic things. So and had a wonderful dinner. So great.
Sorry, mine's just going to be a little more personal because I just wanted to kind of update so everyone's on the same page. But I know both of you guys got left in a lurch at our first meeting. And it was my every intention to be at that first December meeting. My father was involved in a life threatening accident that he was airlifted out to the Bay Area just, you know, days prior to that meeting. So of course, I traveled down to support him and my mom. And I was there for the week. And I came home very excited to, you know, get back to work and was hit with two concurrent serious illnesses. I'm not contagious, but in this day and age, coughing without a mask is gross. So I've got the mask on. But I'm not contagious. So anyways, I, you know, basically, I came to the swearing in because we absolutely needed to welcome our new members. Didn't have as much enthusiasm and vocalism as I normally do, but that is no reflection on on the new, you know, Kimberly, on your new arrival and Meredith, your reelection. So congratulations to you both. I am functional today and I'm here. So that's great and hoping to be better. But and my dad is doing much better. Things are good. That's all that's all going really well. But just been a little bit off my game and wanted to kind of clarify so people understood what was going on. So thanks for your patience.
Thank you, Stacy. I have no updates, but I do just want to wish everybody a happy solstice and holiday season. And I guess the next time we'll all be up on this dais together is going to be in the new year. So no special day.
Can I?
Oh, and Alex, I forgot Alex is here. Yes.
I know you can't you can't see me. I know you can't see me. But, you know, I just thought I was thinking about non-motorized vehicles. And I know that we're getting a lot of those motorized scooters all around town. I saw them before I left. And so I just wanted to add that, you know, it was something Fred brought up. And I'm just thinking that's something else to think about, the scooters and where and how they can be used. And anyway, they're quite comfortably used in many, many places. And so I wanted to bring that up. And the other thing is that I did have an HTA meeting this last week and all seems to be going along well there. And they're talking about going out for a grant in order to do some more study work. And they're thinking in McKinleyville about having something that would be like an Uber, a that would be like an Uber, a smaller vehicle that would have nine passengers to 12, where they could go to outline parts in McKinleyville and bring them into the bus system. And so I just, that's an interesting concept. It won't be door-to-door, but it would be a site to a bus station or a bus stop. So I thought that was, that was interesting. I just wanted to report on that. And merry holidays to you all. I'll see you soon.
We miss you, Alice. Safe travels.
Thank you. I'll see you. I'll be back home tomorrow night. So, take care.
So close, yet so far. No. Okay. Well, thank you, Alex. And with that, I think our meeting is adjourned, and I'm going to use the gavel.